All right, folks, it's four o'clock. Want to call the meeting into order, please? For public information to copy the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the room back here. Roll call.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, folks, it's four o'clock. Want to call the meeting into order, please? Uh, for public information to copy the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the room back here. Roll call.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes in the agenda?
I, I had a comment that was just brought to me because I, I put a no doubt the employees need to be involved and come to these hearings and hear what's being said. And they said, and I was asked if we were going to livestream them. And we haven't been, but we, why could we not? Or livestream them, or at least YouTube them.
And that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we?
Have the, tonight? The workshop, it is now.
Probably tomorrow, but it's, it's, I think, like the one from Monday.
Monday. Yeah, the budget workshops were not videoed, but I've got it going today.
You did have it going.
It's recording today.
Thank you, Kelly.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
Do it, can I ask you a question on that then? Is our normal Monday meetings always livestreamed?
Not livestreamed.
No, it's not ever livestreamed.
They're recorded and then played back later.
Yep.
Typically, the day after is when John gets it out there, but sometimes it might be a couple of days.
Alright, so they're being recorded and played back later.
Correct. I could Facebook live.
Okay. Any other changes or anything on the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. I want to remind everybody that the board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session anytime that we feel is necessary. With that, we'll continue the budget discussion with the board and Lisa.
Did you have the preliminary levy stuff to do? Can we, or do you want to wait?
I'm ready if you need to. I guess, could we?
Yeah, we could, we could discuss, consider the approval of the subject.
Do you need me to come up front, or?
Yeah, that's fine. I gotta get a cough drop here.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. So, these are, come from fire districts, cemeteries, drainage districts, the Ag Society and the Airport Authority. They submit a preliminary request. I don't know if it's part of Lisa's budget process. I have no, I'm not even going to pretend I understand. But then, once the assessor's office provides them with the values for their political subdivision, the numbers are calculated based on the value and their request. And so you see over, on the left side is what the levy is, and then on the right side what it generates from the request.
So what is the valuation they're working these off of? Are these complete now?
Pardon me?
There's no valuation that I can see on this.
I made, I made copies of our, these, uh, we've talked about us getting copies of this in the mail, but we've never got it, I don't believe. But I made enough copies here. Did anybody get theirs in the mail?
I didn't.
I didn't either.
Uh, the county got one in the mail, so maybe you didn't each get one. Did you?
I thought you said you mailed them out.
I did not. I thought, I've seen in past years where you all had a copy in your box in the clerk's office, and this year I was told they were mailed. So I assumed that was for everyone, and then I got a postage, posted envelope with the counties given to me. So, anyway, did you?
So, um, I just made copies. They all have one now.
And what do you have?
Well, this total taxable value on here says three point six one two one eight four three five nine. So three point six billion. And, um, obviously for each one of these entities, that's a different amount.
Correct.
Because they're, they don't, most of these don't have the whole county.
I have my worksheet that I do to prepare this for you guys, but I only have one copy. So this was, this was their request. And every, each policy sub has a separate one of their own, and then the valuation for this particular subdivision. And then it calculates what it generates.
But they all break out of this number here, right? I mean, that, all this, all those?
No. As a, no. Each one, see, Gearing Valley only has two hundred and eighteen million.
Correct. But this is the number you base it out of, and then they subtract their share or their area.
Each, each political subdivision gets what value is attributable to their boundaries.
Correct, which is a percentage of this number.
No.
It's not a percentage.
It's not a percentage, it's a, it's a boundary.
Well, it's a.
It's a series of math.
Yeah, I mean, Morl's going to get a little bit of this, Mitchell gets a little bit, but you add it all together. This is what they're totally assessing here.
For all.
And we aren't dealing with cities or villages yet. This is just fire districts, cemeteries, drainage district, Ag Society and Airport, like I said at the beginning.
Right, right, right.
And is that what you gave them this, your spread?
Thank you. This is what, yeah.
So they, they turn in their value, Gearing Valley Fire has a, a val, like our value is three billion, six million, blah, blah, blah. Theirs is two hundred and eighteen million, of which they get to tax ask four percent for being a fire district, a rural fire district, which levies them eighty seven thousand three eighty. They also have a bond, which they get another fifteen thousand taxes outside of the fifty cent levy. So they're expecting to receive a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and two thousand five hundred sixty-two. That's Gearing Valley Fire.
So they were provided their valuation by the assessor's office?
Seventy-eight pages.
Okay, around the eighteenth or no later than the twentieth, right? Because that's the law. And so they were provided that information. Most of these were, apparently were, had already knew what their budget was and what they were going to need for money.
Right.
You plug that in, and then that brings, um, over here, and then that brings you up to whatever your mill levy is here.
So fire districts, what, they always put in the point oh four for, from general?
Because, yeah.
And then, if you could click on the cemetery tab for me, Lisa? These folks have a dollar amount request.
And you convert it to a mill levy?
Mm-hmm.
Do, yeah, backwards.
So, I mean, like, their request was fifty-seven thirty, and what's generated is fifty-seven twenty-seven, so then, then I backwards math to calculate the levy. Because their valuation then for their district is sixty-six million.
So, um, let me just mention a couple things. Russ has talked to me some, uh, today, and I've been in, uh, touch with Mark Louse several times today. So if we're looking at, I want to be sure that we're all on the same page on this valuation sheet that, again, has to be dated. This one is dated the eighteenth. I know the latest possible date's the twentieth, I think.
Yeah, correct.
And, um, I, we've got Angie's sheet from last year, which, uh, dated twenty twenty-two, eight of twenty twenty-two. And I know the twentieth is the critical deadline. But if we look at these, um, the, um, I know this, this information across the top is also, um, what's used to figure up your thing for the pink cards. On a different form you use, but you use the numbers that come off of here. So, in any event, what I'm understanding from Mark, this first number, which is, um, thirty-three million dollars, says value attributable to growth. And, but that's different than the real growth. The valuable attributable to growth could be personal property. It, it's not just real estate. It, it, um...
Those definitions are down below, too, if you see that.
It's there, and then Mark said, this is the short version. He said he's got two pages of definition down in his office of what these actually mean. And then the total taxable, though, includes everything. And that's that next number. That's the number we use normally and primarily, and that's three point six one two. That number a year ago was two, I mean, three point two five eight. And so the difference between last year and this year is about, what, three hundred and fifty thousand or something like that?
Three hundred and fifty million.
I mean, million, yeah. I keep saying thousand, but.
Because that's a big number.
Right. And so if it's three hundred and fifty, it's about, not quite, but Mark said it's about nine percent. It's nine percent of what the value was before. There was some concern that Russ had, you remember, uh, well, it was the June sixth meeting, I think, to be specific? We had the, uh, line, we had the item on the agenda where we had the three properties, and there was a two hundred and, right at two hundred million dollar mistake on three properties.
That's right.
And you remember, we voted on that here, and, and we changed that.
Reversed it.
And then there were, Russ was concerned, well, did that affect anything in twenty twenty-two tax year, previous? And Mark Louse assured me that it didn't, that that information got rolled over in March of twenty-three, and that's when the, um, things, um, got messed up from acres to square foot, or vice versa, or whatever. And, but that happened in March of twenty-three, which would have meant that it had no effect on last year's, the twenty-two information.
That was our presumption.
Correct.
I see Heather shaking her head.
They set value in March, and that's the value that they're setting for twenty twenty-three.
Right. Twenty-two was long done in December or before.
Yeah. Twenty-three was rolled to the treasures out of last November.
Well, technically, twenty-two was done in August twentieth, right? Um, and so that happened after that, and then it was caught and corrected within a couple months. The way I understand it, it happened probably in March, and we, we voted on it June sixth. And that corrected it. Now, one of the concerns that we had was that if you go on MIPS, it's still in here as ten million, ninety-five million, and ninety-five million.
It's not been corrected.
Not been corrected, although.
It appears it has not been corrected online to us.
It, that's the story. It appears it's not been corrected. But Mark said, hang on, let me pull mine up, and Mark did. And Marx had it correct. So this, which makes this three point six one two correct, in his opinion. That he said, um, MIPS, for whatever the reason, and maybe you guys run across this, but MIPS, for whatever the reason, their stuff has not updated to the public.
I don't know what's going on there, because I was looking, um, when I was doing minutes from protest hearings, I wasn't seeing that that had been updated with the valuations that you had set either.
Right. But his, when he pulled it up on his computer, and his, I'll call it primary copy of MIPS,
Right.
it was correct. And, um, with that, he felt confident that the three point six one two billion is correct. Um, and that would represent above last year again, about a nine percent increase approximately.
Last year was three billion.
Two point five eight. Three billion, two point five eight.
Six four seven nine one seven, I got it up there.
Three point twenty-three seven seven eight.
Three billion, two hundred fifty-eight million, nine hundred, six hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventeen.
Why does, why does that revalue back to?
Real property valuation. It's not, it's not the number, not our taxable value.
Right. And I'm going to tell you about that. I'm going to tell you what I learned from Mark here in just a minute. So anyway, Mark said that the MIPS information is correct in his office, and as far as he's concerned, that makes the three point six billion correct. That's what we're working off of. That's what you worked off of for that. But I know that between what the discussion Russ and I had, that Russ was going to have big questions about this, and so I wanted to address it.
Okay.
Okay? And then, um, the, you can tell me better, um, uh, ex clerk, or ex assessor employee, um, that
Not yet, not quite yet.
this next one, real growth value, um, that one is the one we talked about, new construction, somebody added on to their house. Um, and that stuff is calculated and given to, uh, uh, over to this report from the assessor's office. Whatever they have discovered to be new growth. And he said it could also be things like, um, a certain property, um, became a different use.
A change of use?
Yeah, a different use of property. He said it could be TIF. He said if property was, uh, in TIF and not being taxed at the full amount, but the TIF was running out, then that TIF value would go back on the tax rolls, and then that would technically be attributed to growth. But he said, that's the real growth value. And that sixteen million, the way I understand it, is part of the three point six billion. Would that be true, Ms. Kelly? You think?
Yes.
I think it's part of that. Okay? And then, um, in an effort to calculate for the new law for the pink postcard, this next item has to be calculated by the assessor's office, which is, or given, which is the prior year total real, real property valuation. And that number is three point zero two three billion, instead of the three point two five eight billion, which was here last year. Okay? And he said that does not include any personal property. And, uh, Lisa, you may be aware of it, too, again, looking at that number that says prior year total real property valuation. But my understanding is that that comes from, um, again, last year's valuation of three point two five eight less, any personal property, and any property that is taxed, how do we, uh, railroads?
Centrally assessed.
Centrally assessed. That comes out of here as well. And so Russ, that's how that number ends up coming off of the previous years. And in this case, it was about two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars, a million dollars.
Two hundred and thirty-five million.
Two hundred and thirty-five million. And that's where that comes from. All of that, that's not real property, uh, real estate, gets pulled out of there, and that's where this number comes up. And so, again, I had a fairly extensive conversation with Mark. I said, are you, do you feel confident that these numbers are correct? Your MIPS stuff was up to date and correct? And he said, I am. And he said, you know, I wouldn't have sent it out if I had any doubts. And he said, with the questions that you've brought up, um, kind of threw me to him today. He said, I've double-checked those things and feel confident that we're, these numbers are correct. And so with that thought in mind, I believe that certainly these things that we're getting ready to do, and that's, I guess we're voting on and approving what you brought to us, that, um, he feels confident that we're correct on those. So.
And twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three is correct? There's no, no misstep in there?
No, he said that two hundred million dollar mistake that they made on three properties, um, was absolutely in, uh, what, had nothing to do with the twenty-two valuations. And these ladies were shaking their heads to that. And, and Heather's pretty heavily involved, and so are you, well, in what's kind of goes on through that process. Because we would have had, if that would have got applied or not applied, yeah, we would have known. But, again, I was surprised when I brought that stuff up on MIPS, these pages, and these, this corner box that we all were using when we did the real estate tax protest, previous value, current value. The current value shows that two hundred million dollars on these three properties.
Can I, is, is, that was like printed today?
Today.
I want to see.
It says for, yeah.
I, I was going to say, that's what I wanted to check.
Yeah. There's a date up here in the corner that says April fourth.
Is the last time it got updated.
April second and three twenty-six. And so Mark said, my suspicion is that MIPS has never updated this into the software stuff that the public is going to.
And as far as I remember, we understood it to, it was supposed to update for that office nightly.
Yeah, and.
Or at least if we had touched that parcel.
MIPS, MIPS hasn't, or the office hasn't?
MIPS has.
MIPS hasn't.
You know, sometimes the system goes down and things don't update correctly. I'm thinking that since Angie's not in the office, nobody in there is really aware that it's probably a technical issue. And that they probably need to reach out and contact MIPS and find out why, and see if there's something that needs to be fixed within the assessor's software to make sure that that stuff's updating correctly.
And let, let me say, Mark, Mark told me, he said, I'll be in touch with MIPS tomorrow to find out why that's not updating.
Because it should be updating every night. Our stuff is all supposed to update overnight.
Okay.
What day did you say that was entered?
At midnight.
Entered?
What day were those entered, those numbers, you said?
Uh, well, when they were entered exactly, I don't know, but, um, I think what this would tell me is that on four, four of twenty-three, it was still in there as, on this one, ten million.
Even after we made the, even after we made the deal?
No, because we didn't do ours till six, six.
Still six, six?
Yeah. So, but he said, since six, six, there should have been some updates, and, um, you're saying every night.
Yeah. And, and regular sales have been updating, but I don't know why that piece of it isn't.
So would, Heather, would that have to been generated from the assessor's office here?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's another thing, when we were going through protest hearings, we would, we would find the parcel on that first page, and then you click to go look at the actual data sheet there that you are holding now, and the, the owner names didn't match each other after a sale. I just, I just think it's an update issue with that.
So.
If they, if they would reach out to MIPS, I'm sure it's something that can be corrected.
Mark said he would.
Quite easily. It just is probably something that our office office wasn't aware.
It just, it just didn't, it just didn't get updated, that's all.
So, Mark said he would, um, Mark Louse said he would do that tomorrow morning. So we'll trust that he does. We'll trust that fixes this. I'll probably check it in a couple days, see what it looks like. But, so the point is, all of those, uh, a few of those things all mixed together caused Russ to question whether or not that had an effect on this valuation, and several things, and so, and there was some reason to believe that, but Mark assures me that that's not the case, and that this sheet is correct. And I know a, a lot of our discussion tonight is going to center around this sheet.
That is the hub, right there.
And so that's the point. Um, and so obviously then, the, the real growth here is that point five five, and then the two, they give us two percent plus this real growth of two point five five, and that's done on your other worksheet.
And that's what Lisa has on hers.
Right. And that's the, was the goal that we were having.
That's only to do with that. See how we all just.
Right. That's the goal that you were talking about, and we were talking about in the last week, or whatever else we've been talking about. So I just wanted to give some explanation, and that, um, I think we're, uh, I feel confident, based upon what Marx told me, that, that we're okay here, and he's explained it to a point where I understand, I think, kind of what's happened, so. And what information was confusing in this process. Okay, so I think I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful for me, too. Okay, moving on.
Would you entertain a motion to approve my resolution?
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll continue on the budget discussion, Lisa.
Do you want to talk more about the levy, or you want to get right into the budgets?
Whatever, whatever suits your fancy, wherever you want to go.
All right. I've turned out the worksheets that we, um, that are on, included with the Audit of Public Accounts that we have, we have to file with them. Just explaining a little more about the levy situation. So, oops, sorry. Oh, I wasn't sitting there. Everybody else would like to see it. I've got favors here. You can share back there. Um, I'm going to slip, because I'll put it up on screen, too. So we can levy up to fifty cents. However, we have to share that fifty cents with other entities, as she just brought out. How this looks, every taxpayer in Scotts Falls County will be billed for what our county levies, plus what the Ag Society levies, and what the Airport Authority levies. So right there, we're up to, from where we stand right now, we're up to point four one five one six eight. Then, we are allowed an additional five cents after forty-five cents. If we have inter-local agreements over with other agencies, of which we got, gosh, we report like three million, so we, we can report up to fifty cents with all of our tax levying districts. So what we do is we take all the, all the agencies that are billed to everyone, the county, the Ag Society, and the Airport Authority, and you look down at the levy limit analysis. That point four one five one six eight is there. Plus, we have to share with the fire districts, point oh four. And every fire district is levying the same percentage of their taxable value that's assigned to their agency. Plus, we also have to share with the drainage districts, of which there are three. There is Miniter, Mitchell, and Morl.
Yes.
And we also have. And we also have those county cemeteries. So standing where we're at right now, we're at point four-seven-eight-seven-eight-eight. Is the largest levying district within Scottsfluff County. Now, that's not your cities, this is out in the county. Because not everyone contributes to the Gearing Valley Fire District. Not everyone contributes to the Creighton Valley Cemetery. So depending on where you live, you're going to be potentially billed for Gearing Valley Fire, Creighton Valley Cemetery, and maybe the Minotair Drainage District. Of those three added together can't be higher than that point five levy mark. So looking at our highest cemetery, our highest cemetery district is points, what is it? Point zero-zero-nine-three-five. And our higher, highest drainage different, district is point one-three-seven-nine-oh. That was carried forward up here. Well, it wasn't one-three-seven, it's point one-four-two. Anyway, I'm at the point four-seven-eight-seven-eight-eight. Is it? Oh, okay. To an extent, anyway, I just wanted to bring that out, and I don't know why that would be different. Then maybe I printed this earlier and then I made some adjustments.
Good.
So. Anyway, that's where we're looking. And standing where we're at right now, we are not overtaxing at this point with where everything is standing right now, I guess I wanted to say that. So, this is where we ended the night, the other, night, the other night. We're sitting at a levy at point four-oh, which is comprised of general operating point three-seven-three and bond at point zero-two-six-eight. So we could close out the discussion, and you guys could all vote and say, this looks good, and we can move on. And we have maintained our levy, and you're acknowledging that.
How much are we short yet?
What's that?
How much will we be short on that?
We, we would be short, we would have to go to the pink postcard at this point. But when you start looking at the fact that, what has, what is inflation factor been? What was that, I don't know? How do you expect us to beat inflation?
Hard to beat inflation, you gotta move with it a little bit, we don't follow it.
We got, we can't, you can't expect us to.
Inflation starts with the government, so it's our duty to keep it.
Scottsfluff County will beat the national inflation.
We gotta do our part.
What's our inflation rate?
We have to do our part.
When this current number is at three per, is it just right at the three percent?
Uh, we're probably.
Or is it at the?
I would have to add it all, figure what would be a quick way to fly that in there, but. I am sitting at nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it needs to be reduced to do two-point-five percent growth.
Right, the other night we were, we still needed to cut nine-hundred thousand, right? It, to not have the pink postcard.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And I know the other night, you were suggesting not, that we didn't have to do that, and you're suggesting you didn't want to do that.
No, I don't want to, 'cause I think you're just taking drastic steps backwards. You've been, you've been thrust with a goal of a big monster detention center that probably didn't need to be built as big as it is now. We have to sustain that. You've been given a comm center which your forefathers of, other cities refuse to participate in the operations, even though we are operating on their behalf, because it was felt it was double taxed or some sort of thing like that. We have to sustain these things, and you have to do it in a s- way of excellence. You can't just say, let's cut everything in half, cut everybody's budgets in half. Anyway, I, that's my feeling, unless that's what you want to.
There's no threat of cutting any budget in half.
Well.
Right?
Not in half, but substantially.
Well, you know, there's been some big increases, like, for Roden Bridge, you know, I spend a lot of time involved in that. Our fuel, you know, it's went up like, I would guess seventy-five.
Oh, I was thinking about one-point-two percent. About one-point-two percent? I mean, I'm sorry.
Like seventy-five percent, a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah.
We went a hundred percent higher on fuel, I mean, and we're still trying to maintain roads and bridges, and, you know, our expenses are through the roof.
Oh, we still have to maintain.
We do, it doesn't change.
We still have a county to run.
Yeah, doesn't change.
Now, we, and, and we sat here and went through everybody's budget, line by line.
A hundred percent.
And, and I'm not picking on you, Kurt. I mean, you, you came to us with a vision of what you would like to do. You know, to add on and build up and, and whatever, and it, it didn't go over that well, obviously. But, but you went back and you cut. But naming one other, one other department that came here with an inflated budget. Name one. With something higher and bigger than what they needed to operate for this year.
We're trying to provide services through all these things, and we're gonna provide-
We owe that, we owe that to our constituents.
We gotta provide these services, that, that with the taxes they're paying, the roads and conditions here, things are, we don't continue with that?
We cannot continue at zero increase or negative increase budgets, folks. It can't, it can't happen.
Not when our expenses are doubled.
It can't happen.
These are not negative, negative budgets.
Well, if you listen.
Not one budget is less than it was last year.
Not when they're all budgeted, they've all went up, they've all went up, so, every budget went up. It's hard to hold the line, and I guess what we're saying, hold the line on the whole number if, if all these budgets are moving up. One of the things is, the wage study is required certain marks with a five percent increase to catch up.
Ah.
And if the comparable communities are giving cost of living raises, and we're not, in two more years, we'll be right back where we started, we're behind. We're gonna get behind.
I, I didn't hear the first part of what you said, Kurt, I'm sorry.
Well, you finished the wage studies, and we had the three years or few cases that were mandatory, which, uh, is the C I R. And if these coun- these counties in comparison are currently being cost of living raises, if we don't, after three years, if they give three percent, three percent, three percent, in three years, we're nine percent behind again. And so we're right back in the same ballpark of maintaining a fairly compensated four-point-three percent. Just, just a thought, those who might, might be my budget.
I thought that issue would be brought up at some point, but hadn't until now.
What, the increase?
Well, the point that, um, if we're only doing the five percent that we talked about, not mandatory, but if we're only doing the five percent that we kind of agreed to and said, we, in an effort to get caught up, that, that, that gives five percent on what we felt was owed before and doesn't take into consideration. If they'd have already been there, then what would've been on top of that, the nine percent that you're talking about?
Because we're struggling to get the fifteen dollars added with new minimum wage law.
You know, and, and, and I know our conversation started out when we first started the budget, that we don't wanna be in the, in the pink card group. Obviously. I, you know, I. If, if we do, if we do exceed, and we do have to send out a pink card, are, are any of us afraid to explain to our constituents why we're at, we're at?
Well, I'd be happy to explain to them that I didn't vote for it. As these guys, if, if these four vote for it. But I'd be happy to stand up and say, I didn't vote for that, and we didn't have to do it. That's what I would say.
We're definitely a little more fat in here, I'm sure we can wiggle out if everybody helps out.
What, I asked.
And I'm not saying that there isn't, all I'm, all I'm saying is, we still need to operate.
We do, we gotta grow, everybody else is gonna grow, we have to grow at some point. Do we get a natural build-in increase? Did you say we have a five percent increase already built into this now?
No.
Two-and-a-half percent.
Two-and-a-half percent, okay.
Over last year.
So that's about what the wages went up, so, I mean, wages are probably two-thirds of our maximum.
That's not a bad guess. That's not a bad guess, I-
No, I'm saying wages, two-thirds of us, we take a two-and-a-half percent increase, which, uh, that still leaves you some money, you know, to grow some other things.
And, and actually, and acknowledge the fact that all the unions are getting increases, is the other departments. I have that information. What's that?
We just have to.
Well, I'm asked for it every year. Okay, the first column is, okay, you have the salaries that would be affected by this, because now, this year, your elected officials already had their increases built into the resolution. So they aren't included in that this year, or years before they had them. The one percent is at the top, and then you can see what increases would be at five percent, four-and-a-half percent, four percent.
And that, and that's total for the whole, for the whole budget, correct?
What's that?
That's the total amount.
Yeah, down here I have salaries plus the FICA estimated retirement at four percent is. Four percent salaries would increase about two-hundred-and-forty thousand for this group's. Eighteen thousand for FICA, sixteen thousand. Two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is total impact, but we're only looking at nine-hundred and six. Anybody else wants to see that?
Can we, are we actually using this two-and-a-half percent over here, or is that?
What's that? That's two, two and, one percent is, so, two-and-a-half percent increase would be reflected here, three percent here, three-and-a-half, just.
And so what she's saying, and again, not everybody's five percent, right?
Oh, no.
As far as that salary study.
Mm-mm.
Um, not everybody, uh, is in the five percent deal. Um, some people are.
I mean, that most of them were taken care of last year, Mark.
Okay, so, but if, there's some people here that, um, if, if this is the COLA, there's some people that would get five percent. And then with the thought of the COLA on top of that, would that be correct?
Yeah, I would say so.
So, is this increase, is this monthly or yearly increases sixty thousand?
It's, oh.
It's yearly or monthly?
That's yearly.
That's a one percent increase.
For a year.
For a year. And I didn't give you the one percent column, that would show one percent.
And basically, we're actually running between two-and-a-half and three percent.
Yeah.
So we're looking at about a hundred-and-eighty thousand increase on that.
If it was three percent, yeah, a hundred, I don't know, if you look at the three percent, which has been the tradition. Total impact, two-hundred-and-six thousand, but nine months, it's one-hundred-and-fifty-four. 'Cause we would only run for nine months of our fiscal year, 'cause we're already three mo- almost three months down.
Oh, really?
Two months down, for sure.
So this number, if we did a three percent COLA, this one fifty-four, eight-thirty-eight would be added to that.
Yes.
So then we're looking at a six percent increase.
How? Well.
Don't we have increases built in wages already on there?
Uh, two-and-a-half percent.
Yeah, we got two-and-a-half there, and then three years, five there.
If they're between one and five.
It's five percent increase.
Lisa, what was the, we were in a section the other night, and we said, we might have five-hundred-thousand dollars or six-hundred-thousand dollars. And I said, that'll be our ace in the hole. What, what was that?
That's under administrative, I can show you that.
Your ace in the hole.
Uh, well, I said that, and you said, yeah.
Um.
Was that the keynote? Or did we already move that or something else?
I think it was this, okay.
I know it was in those.
Prior year's expenditures, it's basically what comes in for homestead and property tax credit.
I think it was at even five-hundred thousand, Lisa, it was six-hundred thousand.
I think it was around six.
I would say, I think it's this. Technically, I shouldn't have, I don't know if that's something I should have in there.
So refund of prior year's expenditures?
Auditor of Public Accounts will tell you, no, what?
I'm just trying to think what that, what it, what exactly is that? Refund of prior year's expenditures?
Okay, when I, my first year I was here, Crable turned in his budget, and it got returned, because he had money budgeted on these two lines. And the Auditor of Public Accounts said, you can't put money in those two lines, that's already budgeted, that's already, that's like, when you calculate out your taxes, you're calculating as if you're gonna get every dollar in. But then there's some properties that are gonna have homestead exemptions, some are gonna have veterans exemptions. We get that paid back from the state.
We get homestead payments six times a year, starting in February and every month until July.
Right.
So for half of the year, we get our homestead payments, we get payments in one sixth. Then property tax credit, we get two payments, one at the end of January, one in April. And we get a one percent commission on both of those for collecting.
And that's on your budget, your one percent commission, isn't it? So, when he, they sent it back and said, don't have a number there, he put it under prior year's numbers. And I continued doing that, now I read up on it, and I'm like, I'm not sure I'm supposed to be doing that. I don't know if I called that the ace in the hole. It's basically extra income.
You called about the pass-through, is what you said.
Oh, were you talking about the grants pass-through thing?
That's what I'm talking about, the grant pass-through, there's two six-hundred-thousand dollar items.
There, then that one had an expense on the other side, it basically gives us some wiggle room in having extra expenses or revenue, so we don't have to go get budget adjustments, is how I explain it being in there, or some emergency.
You understand that, Mark? I, I still, you were, you were telling me use it as a pass-through, is that correct, one or my own?
Well, that was, that was this one, it's called state grants, we have it on pass-through, and you can see how much it gets used.
You were saying if Kurt bought a bus, you'd owe him seventy-five thousand, and then you pay him back some.
Well, it wouldn't be so much loan, like, okay, Kurt buys a bus. Three years later, that bus is in an accident, and we get a lo- we get an insurance settlement. And we have fifty thousand dollars, but the state says, we bought your bus back in five years ago. So you, we might've gotten the money, but we gotta turn around and pay back to the state a good portion of that settlement. That's happened a few times. So we're putting money into revenue, and a little bit of money into expenses, and then it washes out, 'cause we send it out.
But you moved that, so you moved that totally out of here, then you, you moved it into his fund then, or where does that money move to? You said the state reimburses eighty percent on the bus, is that right, Kurt, eighty percent reimbursement? Ninety percent.
And that's.
So if we buy the bus for seventy-five, we should be getting sixty thousand.
That's all within his.
We never spend the, the state pensioned the bus, we send them a check for ten percent. We don't actually have to send them the whole amount.
Oh, really?
We just send them, we get kind of a check for the ten percent.
And I gave you the scenario, if it was in an accident. Then we have to deal with, Kurt doesn't have budget for, what if I have a bus in an accident? And I have to pay back the state twenty, twenty thousand dollars. So that's where we can use the general fund.
Isn't that already pays?
Forty thousand, ninety percent of that forty thousand has to go back to the state.
That's whatever the insurance settlement was, you wanted, did that go there?
Yeah.
So what, yeah, so I guess I don't understand why we have to budget that, why that has to come out of?
No, it's just, it's, 'cause you wanna have some flexibility.
But how, why? I would, I'd be more, I'd be more willing to do, have the, have the headache of budget adjustments than the pink, pink postcard. So have these, to have these, you know, almost one-point-two million dollars in, in wiggle room. And then we've got another three-point-five million in cash reserve budgeted.
Well, that's true, I can take those two lines out, 'cause you can see how often I use them, but the expense line will go, and so will the revenue. So really, it's, yeah, but it does reduce the amount of tax asking, so they do have a point.
It will, absolutely.
Leave me a hundred thousand.
I'll leave you a hundred thousand.
So we can drop five, and I'll leave just four hundred thousand.
Well, but it's not, because you're gonna put it here, and I'm gonna move it up there, and it's.
Where's the five hundred?
It's a la-la land, 'cause it's a wash.
She's gotta take it out of revenue.
So that should come out of your total numbers.
That was right there.
So. I'm just looking here, and you've already mentioned the homestead part of it.
Uh-huh.
Homestead exemption loss.
It's not a loss.
And.
It's called tax, I mean, it's called a tax loss, but you get it paid back by the state.
Right.
And we don't at this time, the homestead amount hasn't been certified yet, is that, Kelly, is that October?
I don't remember, I, I think they were just talking about it, though.
So. So that's where we get the money from the state for homesteads and whatever else that might be a property tax. So, that's where we get the money from the state for homesteads and whatever else that might be a property tax exempt. And then I, I put the number there and that's been that way for the last five years, I guess it's worked, but.
I don't know if that's something that you wanna mess with.
Yeah.
Um, Heather, do they work you down, I mean, as far as the homestead exemption, do they negotiate with your mill owner name or whatever our mill is, they pay us on full asking amount?
They, they conclude based on, they conclude based on the value that they've set, what the homestead amount, you know. They go through and give everybody their homestead credit and a lot of times there's, um, what it does is it affects actually the property tax credit. Because every parcel gets property tax credit and so that's why at the end of June, we have to send back the extra real property tax credit that they didn't give out, because the, that's based on adjustments that were made due to homestead.
So, if somebody has a ten percent deduction, they still have to pay the ten percent.
It would be whatever it was for that year, correct?
Yeah, and it's based on, you know, they base homestead on a median, median home value. And then they give them the tax credit, you know, I had a lady today and her, her homestead amount. Something must've changed with her income last year because she didn't get as much homestead as she had last year, so.
Okay, bring that.
You know, so it, it's based on their age, it's based on their income, it's based on their medical bills.
So, they pick up the balance, so you get two checks, you get one from the homeowner, one from the state then, or is that?
We just, we get one lump sum and then we have to divide it out to all the entities.
Oh, boy, that sounds like, huh.
It can be great.
So, the, um. Then let me be sure I understand that homestead amount in here, loss, it says four hundred and forty-four thousand.
Because it's, it's based on your, I mean, it affects the amount that we send out tax bills for.
Right.
But we get paid back by the state, so.
Right, and it's an approximate, but let's say it's four forty-four and that we're gonna get back about that amount.
Well, and we're not budgeting this at all. This can't, this number's in the actuals.
The homestead's right in, was it?
Oh, yeah, and I'm sorry, that, um, I'm seeing that now, you don't have anything budgeted there. But obviously there'll be some there and then there'll be some on the revenue side.
Okay, we've asked, we've asked some of our.
This is the revenue side, we're looking at.
Some of our department heads to come back. Uh, Lonnie, you had some concerns, or I guess we had some concerns as far as the jail, did you have some additional?
Mark and I went through the budget.
Okay. Let, let's, can we move, can we move through those and then?
We, I think Mark's already spoken for her unless she has more to add today.
We, we, we talked about that on Monday night.
Okay, so you, you get, you guys are handled then, all right? Jail, we, we're gonna talk about sheriff.
We handled, uh, we handled the detention center and we explained all that to you and I think you're okay with it, it's two percent difference.
Okay.
Tonight, we're here to talk about sheriff's office and the communications.
Communications.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you come up and let's, let's talk about that. Yeah, let's get, let's get through some of these individual budgets and then we come back on as far as the full, the full budget.
What number, I'm sorry, six, um, I'll help you look, just a second, I don't even know. To me, it's six five one. And we dealt with that on August tenth. We're with day three.
Day three.
Day three and you got treasurer and you're gonna go about halfway down on the day three stack. Registered deeds, see where you're at with this, and it's after emergency management. And then after, you got about five more. Did you find yours already?
I got communications.
You got communication, okay. It's after emergency management? And it's after emergency management, then I think there's detention center and then sheriff, and that was day three. I guess we could go and put them all in order, but I'm not. All right, it's. There's communications.
Communications, all right, great.
All right.
Okay.
Troy, what do you have?
You want communications first?
Yes.
Okay, so Tyler and I sat down and talked, um, about where we can make our cuts and we've decided that we're gonna cut out to any out of state, uh, conferences or training, uh, that we had scheduled, we're gonna cut those back. So, that's gonna reduce, uh, travel expense, which is seventeen hundred, from, um, I think he budgeted five thousand, we're gonna cut it down to thirty, uh, to fifteen hundred.
Five thousand to fifteen hundred.
Five thousand down to fifteen hundred and meals, make that fifteen hundred and then, uh, lodging, we'll change it to fifteen hundred as well. Um, and that's just because you'll have to attend the, the state conferences, because you're part of the board, so you have to attend, just part of the board. Radio repair, I should talk to that one first, that's at twenty thousand, we're gonna reduce that down to ten thousand, um, we think we'd be okay, um.
Everything's pretty new.
Everything's pretty new, uh, we don't, don't like to anticipate a, a major malfunction, we're just gonna keep our fingers crossed and hope it doesn't, so I think we can get by with ten thousand on that one.
Which line item is, oh, yeah, I see.
Radio. Zero four hundred.
And you're gonna take it to what?
Take it down to ten thousand.
Are you gonna come back up to telephone? At all?
Telephone.
Eighteen thousand and gosh, for the last four years, you haven't beat three thousand on that.
I don't, I don't know that one, I guess.
Unless you can think of something else, anyway, see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do, I only spent four twenty-five.
Hmm.
That is a.
I think we need to trim that out quite a ways there, don't we?
Right.
That'd help.
Unless there is something that we're.
Actual.
I can change it back, Mark.
Wonder why that is.
So, we'll take that down to five thousand then?
That's what I put through in there, is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, we get, well, yeah, we only spent four twenty-five.
I wonder if we're spending.
What did you take it to?
Five.
Five.
So, we cut it down thirteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one at the bottom, radio tower fees, um, we're gonna move, we'll knock ten thousand off of that down to twenty eight six.
What's the total draw on that?
Mm-hmm, just a second, let him finish, okay. Prior year, you supposed to had some work done on the radio tower that he put in there?
We did at the, the South Mitchell and some other towers, we don't anticipate, everything's pretty well new and up and running and should be good.
Sounds good.
So, that should be a total of about forty grand, I think.
Forty thousand is what I got.
Did you change that thirty-eight six?
Thirty-eight six to twenty-eight six.
That's, oh, you're looking on that one. Over another row.
I'm doing on, yeah, the N.
I thought you took it off the official's request.
Nope, I leave the official's request alone, so we can see what they originally asked and now we're look, making adjustments in the next column. All right.
Did I just?
You have an extra column that I, that's why.
Yes, your pages don't have these columns, you're right.
Yeah, so that's why I'm looking, I'm going, well, it never changed, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a reason.
I understand, finally.
You're all good, you're all good, thank you.
So, we, we've reduced yours by forty thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I think you did an excellent job of going through and talking us all you could.
Tyler's not here tonight?
He is at the N, he's, uh, had to travel with Carney, he's a member of the N R N board and they have a meeting in the morning, so that's where he's at.
Troy, did you guys tell me a different number for the intergovernmental payments?
What's the salary on that position, just out of curiosity?
From, can, one question, can I ask him a question, then we'll go back up and ask your question, okay? Um, intergovernmental payment from Foxview, did you guys tell me one forty?
No, it's, uh, I think it's one thirty-three.
Can I bump that up?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna be, it'll be bumped, if we still, uh, as soon as we get the dispatcher's contract taken care of, it will bump the Foxview.
So, I could add some revenue?
Right.
Because I, I, I think you and I talked about it, but I didn't change it.
Yes, it should be, it's one thirty-three as of last year and we just have it adjusted for the unfinished draft dispatcher contract.
So, you're cool with that, I can bump that to one thirty-three for sure?
For sure.
There you go, there you go, fifty thousand.
What line item is that?
Three, um, three fifty-one oh one in the revenue.
Three what?
Three fifty-one oh one revenue, that's the, um, Foxview County portion.
And you're changing it from one hundred to?
One hundred and thirty-three.
One thirty-three.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
And Mr. Knapper, his salary, annual salary's about seventy-four thousand.
So, this other, the official's salary, the previous two years was higher than that, was that because it was raised at that time or because part of yours, or how did that go?
He just rolled in the thirteen thousand the sheriff and I, uh, get for helping oversee, he just put that all in the same, because when they were taking it out of the line item, uh, payroll, it all came out the same line item, so he just had it put all in there.
And you, the salary for you guys for, for your part in this, where does that show up here then?
It's up there now, fifteen.
What's that?
It's deputy's salary.
The fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
That fifteen is yours.
He gets thirteen.
Right. Right.
Okay. Any other questions on communications? Thank you guys, okay, what else?
Want to go to the sheriff's department?
Yes.
Okay, I gotta, I gotta go to seventy-three first, or not, whatever I just said, go to sheriff, six five one. Because if I, if you wanna see that number now, Russ, I have to go back and then come back.
No, no, you do what you gotta do, just so.
Otherwise, I'm gonna fall behind, because he'll start spouting things and I won't be ready.
It'll show up on the main.
Yes.
Expenditure.
All right, so, um, we're gonna try, what we did was try to get at least sixty-three thousand reduced out of our budget, we did that by, um, on our HSA contributions, take a thousand off of that. We think there'll be some that don't, uh, that use out of county insurance, not our, not our insurance, so we think we can take care of that one.
How much?
About a thousand off of that.
Okay.
And then, um, on our clo- clothing line item, uh, we're gonna reduce that by five thousand and take it down to ten thousand.
It, is it under, what is the number?
Nineteen oh four.
I'm sorry.
Two nineteen oh four.
Nineteen oh four.
Okay, what was it, two?
Uh, take it down to ten thousand, we'll reduce that by five.
Okay.
Um, and then down at autos, we are, we're gonna eliminate, uh, the purchase of one patrol car, so we'll wanna get two this year. And we won't have, so that'll save us on the purchase price of patrol car equipment, installing that stuff, and we estimate that at being about fifty-seven thousand in savings, uh, for a total of sixty-three thousand.
What line item is that?
Line item would be five dash zero three oh one.
Eighty-four now?
Yeah, eighty-four. Yes.
We expect to see that next year then, right?
If we could keep them all healthy and running, we'd be okay.
That's right.
If we can.
Just for a question.
Yes, sir.
What do you, what do you consider your revenue, where do you, how do you bring in your revenue here, you guys? Once, do you, you sell any surrendered property or? No, yeah, it's not.
That would go to the general fund anyway, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All, all of our revenue comes and goes straight to general fund.
And our revenues comes, comes in on firearms purchase permits, then inspections, uh, we do get s, um, some, uh, somebody, we sell at, uh, like, uh, not on tax sales, but, uh, foreclosures and stuff, we do get a percentage of that to help out.
So, with that new having to serve on every tax sale that I issue, did you figure that in your revenue? Because that would help your revenue run a little bit.
It will, but I have no idea what that numbers go, yeah, because we've never had to do that before.
They can turn the new about a hundred dollars.
Right.
Oh, it just started.
Yeah, and we, and how many do you anticipate?
It looks like your revenue always comes in short, it's never over, you're not really making money with revenue, definitely.
No.
It's like we're short, it's like we're short quite a little on revenue.
So, uh, Ms. Hostchild just, just reminded us that this next year on the tax sales, that we'll, we'll be able to charge, because when they sell our ta- tax certificates and we have to notify the person that owns that, so we can charge a certain percentage to that, I think she said up to a hundred bucks.
About the only way you're gonna collect is if it sells for more than what, uh, revenue is, some of those people.
We'll charge up front.
They have to charge, they get to charge the investor.
We'll charge the investor up front.
That's the investor, that's the extra hundred dollars to the investor.
Not, no, what that, she, she says there's about three hundred a year.
Yeah, at least three hundred a year, so.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna get to charge those three hundred people.
We do.
That oughta wake them up and get them down here to get their taxes paid.
Right, yeah.
Anything else on the sheriff's department?
What, what, do you have your idea, any idea what the total was on that?
Oh, you ready for that now?
What'd you say that one was, was that sixty-three or was it one five?
What we, we were able to cut was sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand.
Eight one three.
Yeah.
So, between the two.
Uh, a hundred and thirty thousand.
Because I was at nine four nine.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Ashley, you wanna come up? We had, there were some questions on your budget that we need to get cleared up, so that you're where you need to be. I think you had a part-time person in a, in a school that you were being questioned on.
Right. So, questions?
Um, question I have for you. Part-time individual is doing the work that you were able to do.
Correct.
And it's not, it's.
It's a project that is not a high priority, but one that has been needed to be done. Um, but it's just, I mean, it's surveys.
Okay.
It's to help our local surveyors or even the ones that come from out of state, they, you know, a lot of those guys do their research in the evenings.
Okay.
And we are not open. Um, so, we're just trying to get them online with the state surveyor's office, um, when they were originally scanned, they were scanned as tips and those don't go online. So, they have to be re-scanned as PDFs.
So, once those are done, then you guys would be able to keep up with it, is that, is that what I was told?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then that person will no longer be needed.
Correct.
Okay, the other thing was the school that we talked about?
Yes.
Am I correct, when I asked you about it, you said you haven't attended it in five years?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie, you, you brought up something about the, being included in some cost, I, I, I guess I didn't quite understand.
The cost of this training that they're going to?
Yes, was, was to be included with something else I, you might have.
No, that, okay, so, no, that was, something that came up was, um, the cost of the training that they're going to, they're only paying for travel mileage and
Correct.
room, meals, that sort of stuff, because the cost of the registration is actually covered by
By maintenance contract.
His, the maintenance contract on the software. So, I guess my, my concern is, you know, maybe there, maybe there would have been an opportunity to save money on the maintenance contract if that.
No, we've, we've had an, um, a free entry into Esri for the last twenty years.
Okay.
It's something that has been, it's, it's a perk, it's included in my, um, thirteen thousand dollar maintenance contract that I've had the last fifteen years.
Okay.
Um, this isn't the first year that we've asked to go, um, Suzie, Tim and I went five years ago, Suzie and I went probably three years before that. My grandpa and Suzie went, um, I mean, it's not a new thing. And if, I mean, it's not, it's not vacation, I mean, I know it's in California, but it's not vacation. It's four days of constant classes, by the time you're done, you're tired. I do have a fourth entry, if anybody would like to follow me around for a week.
And I think those were the only two issues that we had with.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any extra anywhere.
Okay.
Um. So, then what was the story with the person?
It was part-time until this extra work that needed to be done is completed and then.
How long is that?
I would say two months.
Two months, so.
Two more.
We need to be able to have enough money in here for another two months, right, Lisa?
Yes.
And so, is that what we have or do we need to deduct some?
She working. She's working about sixteen fifty.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Um, and she's working twenty hours a week times. Um, and she's working twenty hours a week times.
Twenty-four, she's, yeah, she's working twenty-four, but I mean, if we, if we want to, I don't think she'd have a problem with it, but currently, she's working twenty.
How many, twenty-four hours?
Yeah, she works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I can't hardly get her to leave the computer, she's, when she leaves, her eyes are swollen, like, I feel so bad for her, I'm like, you gotta take a break.
I think it's a minimal cost for what we're getting done, I mean, it's a project that's been needed to get done.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I think you could probably knock it down a little more than fifteen thousand, I'm seeing twenty-four hours a week for four months, around sixty-five hundred dollars, so we could knock it down some more.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and it's, I guess, well, I'll wait till we're done with this, but you know, I've got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you calculate emperors for her?
Not necessarily, but I think her emperors is already kinda high, so we're okay.
Okay, okay.
So what, that number was thirty-four and you're changing it to?
What, it was thirty-four, we had dropped it to fifteen the other day, and I just now dropped it to eight.
Okay.
So, and then they were, we were double checking the emperors calculations and making sure she has it.
Well, just about pick up your expenses on that trip, there were eight thousand if we dropped another seven, like.
And by then, we should know where, where things are standing here pretty soon, as far as keeping a valuable resource around, that we perceive to be a valuable resource, which is why we kinda went down that path.
Right.
Well, which isn't only why we went down, but twelve thousand one hundred and thirteen thousand, I think you are fine.
So, is anybody still having any concern about the, the school that they want to go to, or we wanna take it out, leave it in?
No, I, and like, my comment was gonna be kind of along the same lines, if we take that out, that's eight thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, the, the lodging, yeah.
The lodging is eight thousand.
And the only reason that's.
You know, so we're looking at a total of, you know, taking ten thousand dollars out of our budget if we take away the training, but, but my point is, we're, we're scratching, we're scratching here. We scratched at the sheriffs, we scratched at the communications, you know, we're gonna scratch everywhere we can for ten thousand, or three thousand, or twenty thousand, or, you know, fifty-seven thousand dollars on, you know, with that vehicle. I think we need to look for some bigger items, and my next suggestion, and I, I've kinda brought this up at the last meeting, but, you know, maybe we could look at, um, what positions have been open for the last six months? And have not been filled, or maybe for the last nine months have not been filled, can we, um, can we have a, can we do a, a hiring freeze on any position that has been open for more than four months, five months, six months, and say we're not gonna fill those positions in this fiscal year, and see how much that saves us. And then, the next step would be, um, the next big chunk of money I think I could find would be the, um, the cash reserve, I think we can drop that by half a million. Um, from, I think it's a three point five million, if we dropped it to three million, um, those are, those are the big items that I can come up with.
I bet you're. I'm not catty born, we could take some of those out. Your nickel and diming, I could take some of your mileage and stuff out of, you, look how much you use for mileage allowance and they can't.
No, I just said I'm not nickeling dime, I just said I don't wanna nickel and dime anymore, so we've been nickeling, I, hold on a second, I said we've been nickel and diming for the last thirty minutes here.
Especially your budget. Yep.
And let's look for some big items.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I just said, I said we're, I'm tired of the nickel and diming, and I wanna go to big items now.
Okay, so you're six months or more.
Well, right, we could look to see how much mileage I spent in the last year.
Yeah.
And maybe you can recommend like you did the other night, that we oughta start, we oughta cut sheriff's office and public safety of any kind and whatever else, and that's a political ploy, and you know it, and I'm not interested in hearing that.
If you wanna look at my mileage and my lodging over the last five years, you'll see a steady decrease since the first year was on the board. Naco pays for the majority of my travel, I don't do a third of the travel that I used to do.
Okay, so we still cover it at ninety-eight hundred.
So the comment, the comment is out of line, is what I'm saying, and let's find some big items that we can cut.
Well, if you.
Don't.
But based off of last year's expenses, like in there, I mean, that's a little bit.
Don't want to talk about that.
I don't, I, I don't disagree with looking for big items, but we spent thirty-five or forty minutes questioning that line item out of her budget, when, when she presented it to us.
But no, it's yours.
Right, and I'm really not done with it, but let me ask it this way to you, Ashley, and that's, that eight thousand dollars that you have budgeted, you just said that you've done that about every five years, would that be correct?
Um, it was more, I think in the past, they tried to go every three, um, but we haven't been refined.
Okay.
So.
Well, my concern is, we have an office that has three people, three people going to a, um, out of state, far away, training situation. And I don't believe that's what's been happening in the other departments. Now, I may be wrong, and if I am, then someone pointed out to me, which you probably won't, but I'd be interested in that, because I'm not.
Or you're saying to not shut down the office, somebody needs to stay, is that where you're at?
Well, that could be true too, that, just the, the general thought of, um, if it's important for people to be able to use the office, then in a, a lot of offices, especially bigger ones, we would certainly stagger training and things like that, um, but, um.
The only reason I would like to send all of us is because, I, and I tried to print the agenda for the July twenty twenty-three, uh, conference, it was two hundred and eleven pages on front and back. So, one person isn't gonna touch anything, and it is a waste of county money. That is the only reason why three of us would go, so we can all get what we need, come back and apply it.
How often is the Esri conference?
It's every year, but again, we don't, we don't go.
What you had said the other night, you were gonna divide it up into three groups, you're gonna all take a different class, you're gonna combine it.
Yep, yeah, there's, um, I mean, so, one, in one room, um, in this conference, it's about the size of our civic center. And it's broken out into different categories, so like, if we're having problems with emergency management types of stuff, we go to that expert, and they sit down with us, they work with us. Um, and it's an entire room of different categories and stuff like that, on top of our breakout sessions throughout the day for four days.
Well, I'd certainly agree with the thought, and certainly in our office, if we go somewhere, we do exactly what you said, and that's that, one person goes to one training, another one goes to another training issue, and another one goes to another.
Well, that's how you get the most out of it.
That's the obvious way to do it, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so.
You're go, you're only, are you down a week, or four days, five days, two days?
Uh, we, we would fly on a Sunday, because it starts Monday morning, and then we fly home Friday, so, just the four days in classes.
You're gonna be shut down for a week, your office will be closed.
Right.
I guess, one of the things that bothers me is the fact that, again, um, let's take a look at how many other departments do the same thing, and I would guess it's minimal, Kurt, you said you do.
I, myself, when I try to dig it, if I can, I dig one other person's book from our software conference, which is usually two days, and they move it around the country.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ninety percent minus three hundred.
Yeah.
Where did communications just go?
Nashville. Didn't communications just go to Nashville, you said?
Yes, sir.
And how many people was that?
Uh, a tiger and two dispatchers.
And five years ago, how many people would've went to that?
Probably about the same, Ray had a, Ray always took, when he was a charge downer, always took at least one or two dispatchers with him, when they went to a, at a conference.
Well, I'll be.
The more specialized you get, the harder it is to get training in the state of Nebraska, I have one training that I go to, and it's every other year, and we don't go to that every year. I mean, other offices have training that they go to multiple times during the year, we don't do that.
I'm gonna say with, some of the departments having the county with their technical expertise and knowledge they have to have, a lot of that training is only available out of state. I know myself, so the trainings I take, I have to go out of state to get, because it is not offered in the state of Nebraska.
Well, what I also know is that, um, a whole lot of training, and you're gonna suggest it's not the case here, but, uh, a whole lot of the training can be done online, in your office.
And that's fine, if you wanna move my ten thousand dollars to a training line item, we'll stay here and we'll take three online classes.
Right, and you said it costs the same.
Yeah, it's more expensive to take the online classes.
Is what you told us the other night. Online, yeah, and why would that be again?
Because when you go to Esri, you can get four days of classes versus, for, for that price, versus classes that start at seventeen hundred dollars for one class.
Because it's built into the maintenance fee.
Right, yes, they waive that, but they don't do the online.
Well, um, the overall process and the overall thought that, that that would be the norm, I don't like it. Um, that the norm being certainly not every year.
And it has never been.
Uh, we're talking, we're talking every fifth year at this point, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know that I'm terribly happy, but I'm not terribly, not to the point of saying, no, absolutely not, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't vote for that, but, anyway, I appreciate you, let me know. We saved eight over here, which may help pay for this, then I, I would like to comment on Charlie's point about, he, he talked about a hiring freeze. And I don't know that a hiring freeze is exactly the thing that I would like to, um, bring up, but I certainly have seen, um, organizations such as ours that require, um, the approval of hiring people prior to, um, actually doing it.
Placing applications and whatnot.
Um, yeah, and that, uh, point being is that the elected officials are in agreement with that before they actually go out and do it, now, again, we have a, we have some different things here going on, and with elected officials, I don't know that we have that, any of that authority, quite honestly, to say that, but, um.
But if you, but if you give a, if you give a appointed official a budget, and within that budget is budgeted X number of people. Why would they have to come to us to replace somebody within that, within that organization?
I think if.
If it's, if it's within their budget.
If we know that upfront, and in fact, I, I asked Lisa the other day about, um, people, if we had more people in departments, um, and do we have any list of that anywhere?
Oh, I got lists of who's employed, sure.
Sure, but people that were, this budget's asking for additional people that weren't here before. We don't have the list or something.
What are you asking me, I said I have a list of every employee.
Right.
By department, I can, we can sort it any sort of way you want, by their wage, by, yeah.
Withholdings insurance, I'm sure you're good.
Yeah.
Are you asking if, if, if a, a specific department is wanting to add people?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I think we know that.
And is it in this budget?
Within, within this budget, yeah.
You think we do?
I think, I think they brought that to our attention, I think, I think Matt's the only one, uh.
Kurt.
Kurt, Kurt has asked for additional personnel.
I'm assuming communications is ramping up some personnel for.
Not this year, sir.
Yeah.
So the ones you have now is gonna be enough for your Box Butte.
Yes, sir.
County stuff.
Yeah, I think the only ones that asked for additional are, are you guys, I believe, if I, if my memory serves me right, so they did come to us to ask for additional per.
And Ashley.
And Ashley, yeah.
Right.
Steve's got, were you short three, but they're in the budget, I mean, there were, there's a relation, our crew is all set the budgets. Yeah, you're, well, that's, but that, but that's what I meant, they were, they were included in, right, they were included in that budget.
No, no filling holes. I understand that, and I don't have a problem with that.
No additional positions, he's, he's been needing, he just hired all of the staff.
Right.
So what, what, what you're asking for, Mark, is if somebody's going to add a position, that they would come to us to ask for that.
Well, I'm, Charlie said that, and I'm, um, I'm not having a big problem with that, but I'm not sure that has to be decided here tonight.
Yeah.
That might be a time for something on the agenda some other time.
Something we're down the line, oh, I understand, I understand, sure, I understand.
Are you even getting applications for those opening positions, is that a question?
The what?
Are you even getting applications for those opening positions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I'm getting, here's Charlie saying, well, if you got a position open for nine months and you're requesting additional personnel on top of that, why do we even have this, and obviously, it's hard to hire, um, but
Right.
if you're asking for additional positions and you got a position not filled for six, nine months, then how are we gonna get that additional personnel to?
Yeah, that, that is part of my, part of my comments, but, but also, you know, if we have had that opening for nine months, can we eliminate that position for this fiscal year?
Well, the, the second part of that question, are we operating efficiently with that vacancy? And I think in, in Matt's, in Matt's case. Exactly, in Matt's case, where his workload is increased because of that, the, the person that he doesn't have, I think we just answered your own question.
Well, I think, I mean, there's gonna be, it's gonna be nuanced across different departments, I mean, some departments, you know, are treading water, other departments are making it work. So, you know, I think we need, that's why, what I would like to see is a list of all open positions, and for how long they've been open, or how long they've been vacant. I think that would help.
I think, uh, one of the areas is Dave Eubanks, where he's had positions open for a long time, and if he had somebody walk in tomorrow
Yeah.
and they were qualified and whatever, I, he needs to fill that position.
And I think he has left a couple positions open for that purpose, but he's also already trimmed his budget, assuming he's not gonna be able to fill all of those positions.
In this year.
Yeah, is that, do you guys remember those comments from Dave?
I, I think he budgeted.
I don't think he budgeted enough if he would hire everybody, I don't think he did so.
Yeah, I think he budgeted enough to fill what he needed to have.
He said he was gonna just assume he had to do the workload himself.
Yeah. Just as, just as Paul Payne did when he, when he filled these.
But I thought he had cut some money because he thought that there was no chance that he could fill all of those positions in the next month.
I don't know if he. So there's your positions, um, I believe we are filled up in public defender, he just hired his last attorney. So, Dave, I think Eubanks would say, I need people if I can get them, equipment operator.
That sheriff's department intelligence position's not on there?
I think it's, I don't know if she put it out there, but that was a part-time and he.
It's part-time, it's completely grant-funded, no county dollars go to that.
Okay. I don't, the only place I had seen it was on the bulletin board in Lisa's office.
Hmm, corrections officers, they're about ready, they've had a couple people leave, and I think they've got two or three positions to fill.
Four, am I right?
But, but, but those are, those are included in your budget already, those aren't additional people.
No, those are not additional people, and, and, there's always, you got eighty people roughly, seventy to eighty people, that's, there's always turnover there. And so, we just, we, we always accept applications, that's a constant thing, so when we get down, we've got applications to draw from.
Right. Exactly.
So, anyway, getting back to what I said, I think, in, in this budget year, we only have three, Ashley. three, Ashley, Matt and, and, uh,
Kurt.
Kurt that have asked for additional personnel to handle their additional workload in their budgets. Everybody else is either, Steve has got three positions open, but that's in his budget already. Those are holes that need to be filled.
So you're asking.
Right, they're not, they're not, they're not new positions, correct? Okay.
So you're asking if he can absorb one of them since they've been open for a while?
Well, again, and I'll, I'll add to that. If, if you've got three positions open, it, what, what does that do to the organization if you're only gonna fill two of them? Obviously you need three positions, that's why you're advertising.
I would, we could actually use another one in each shop just to meet the demand of what the public wants. One or two more in each shop just to meet the demand that they can expect for their rooms.
I would assume as, I would assume as a good, as a good supervisor, if you have too many people, that would be something that you would decide, correct?
Yes, yes. But, I mean, the turnover we have is really wage-based. You know, we hire equipment operators. We start at eighteen bucks an hour and they can go work anywhere else for twenty, twenty-five bucks an hour. We give it Paul Reed, he's up to thirty bucks an hour. We're not gonna, that's why we cost up, we have these openings, it's just our, our wage. So, we have four graders in each uh, district, three truck drivers. Right now, garing's two grader guy is short. So they're just trying to cover their area and make do with what they have.
So you move people around?
Putting a position for us, I'd be, I believe, I was told by some veterans, they did that like twelve years ago, I think, or something. Cut like two people out of each shop already like twelve years ago.
And, and, and never, and never filled them back up?
Never filled them back up.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking, you know, you did take one out, say just for this budget year, you wanted to replace a position. I don't think, I don't think you can see that comeback. I just, history tells me, once you've got a position and stuff, you don't ever see that come back.
So now with the, with the positions that you're short, you're moving people from one district to another to fill those, to fill those jobs?
Right.
Okay.
When you do that, that district.
That district is short.
They're there, like, where's my rate?
Yeah.
We could use one, two more people in each shop actually to meet the demand that's out there.
And, and I don't disagree that if we have any departments that feel they need to add personnel because of added responsibility, yeah, I have, I have no problem with that. But if it's in the budget and you've budgeted for three more person, then that's fine. That's my, my opinion, but.
I think we could even hold people better if we would get that bi-monthly pay started. I don't care if we have to estimate the first check and balance the second one. I've been wanting to do that for a long time. I mean, it makes a lot of difference.
All right, let's, let's, all right, let's keep moving. Uh, Matt, you wanna?
Can you come up?
Yeah.
I think, uh, the addition I added to my budget was, uh, ten thousand dollars for part-time personnel and we were kinda sharing that with, uh, public health, right? So the thought process was, I, I know Deborah's position is, is going away. We did hire Sue. She'll start onboarding Monday for Tammy's position. Uh, Tammy resigned and then you all know what happened over, uh.
They may or may not. We didn't announce it to them.
What's that?
I didn't hear it.
I don't know if I wanna hear that out.
We, uh, she's, she's, yeah, that's okay. We'll, we'll talk about it later.
Okay. Regardless, uh, Tammy's daughter resigned her, um, due to, and Tammy resigned due to FMLA running out. So we ended up hiring Sue. Sue's a great fit. Uh, she's a veteran, she's been working in the office for about two months now. And, uh, we'll start onboarding her Monday morning early, so. Uh, with the additional position, it was to come in and said as a secretary, we had talked about part-time position possibly to help with filing and things like that. And also brought to the board or the commissioners, um, previous to that, my wife coming in and working part-time for the ninety days, which we won't need, uh, now that I have Sue and Lisa, both of those positions are filled. Uh, but the, the ten thousand was for an additional person to come in and maybe assist with some of the phone calls and secretarial duties that we have, uh, just due to overall workload. And that's kinda what we tried to budget this year with that ten thousand.
Matt, what do you think your increase has been since you've been there?
Veterans?
Yeah.
If you wanted me to just snowball and, I think I probably picked up probably three hundred veterans from Laurel County. I've probably picked up an additional two hundred and fifty from Boxbeet County. I'm assistant ten to fifteen out of Sioux County. Wyoming, I've probably increased, uh, s- with Goshen County, about five hundred veterans. Colorado, I've got an additional twenty-five veterans that I can think of off the top of my head. Uh, and most of them are veterans that just can't get service or they're closer.
And that's not even Scottsbluff County, yeah?
Scottsbluff is twenty-one hundred plus. So.
With the same personnel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of that's been due to, and we're, we're actually doing NVAs right now for Kimball. Uh, their VSO left and all they have is a, uh, admin gal. Darcy's working up there. She does not have a, a veteran service officer right now. She can't forward NVAs or Nebraska Veteran Aid Fund applications without a signature. So I'm signing all those for her, which means I have to read all those, sign them and submit them.
Tell me, tell me the consequences if somebody doesn't get taken care of in, in a timely manner.
With an NVA, it could be they lose their house, they can't pay rent. It's emergency situations typically with an NVA. It could be dental work, so they go out to get those, uh, quotes from local dentists and then we reach out to the state of Nebraska to help supplement then with that, the financing for those dentures or, uh, dental work. A lot of it really comes down to emergency stuff, so if they're not able to pay their, uh, mortgage or their utilities, what we're doing is we're reaching out, showing them what's in their bank account, why they're short that money, what the emergency is. And we're reaching out to state for those funds. So we have to prove it. It's not an easy thing. We have to show that those finances are going, why there's an emergency there and it's not just straight derelict, you know, it's, the veterans lost a job, possibly no, no reason that not, not getting fired, they just lost a job. Uh, some of them could be moms got cancer, they went to take care of mom and the boss said, hey, if you go do that, we're letting you go. And, you know, we're, we're jumping in there trying to take care of those, those needs. We've got one right now, the same situation, mom's got cancer in Louisiana. He had to walk away from the job site to take care of mom. Uh, and we're trying to find those funds to make sure that the, you know, we gotta pay rent, you gotta pay your bills, we gotta keep them in a house, so we're trying to help that through the emergency fund. I have my veterans fund. We also use Nebraska Veterans Aid to do those things, so.
So your workload has definitely increased the last.
Yeah, yeah, just to touch.
That's probably putting it mildly.
So, um, so is there a preference then? I know we kind of officially take care of Scottsbluff County and Banner County.
Yep.
Is there a preference for those people or, I mean, part of the issue here is that you're doing such a good job with these people, you're attracting people from a, even a bigger area. And you're getting more and more and more because of the good job you've been doing, which I appreciate and I understand that, but at some point, uh, what do we do there? Are we, if we keep attracting further and further out, is that
It's absolutely triage.
where we wanna go?
It's absolutely triage. So.
Okay.
My priority one veterans here are Scottsbluff County. That's who I work for, that's who we own, right? So a lot of these veterans that reach out to me from Colorado, Wyoming, they do get sent on the bottom of the pile. Uh, taking care of our veterans, our local veterans first. Some of it's triage. If I've got a veteran that has got stage four cancer in the prostate, I'm gonna make sure I file for that veteran, whether he's in our county or if he's in another county, right? So there is some triage involved. Uh, I try to prioritize our veterans first, but it's really where the, the most need is. The beauty of the VA is everything's a process, right? So with you, if you walk into my office and I don't have any service treatment records, I don't have any of the data that I need to file your claim, it's pretty easy. I file a form and I file an intent to file and I have three hundred and sixty-five days to get back to you. In that, in that wait, you're waiting for your service treatment records to come in. You may be waiting for your DD two fourteen. So everything's got a stage, right? So once I get those files, w- once I get those claims fired off, there's a period of wait. So, you know, they've gotta get an examination, they have to, uh, they have to do the exam and they have to do the DBQ. So that veteran's in its own little pile. So he could reach out to me and just say, hey, Matt, have you heard anything on the status of my claim? I went, I went, completed all my exams, DBQs are done, I'm just waiting for the results, right? And then there's obviously the end of that where they get the results, they come back into me. If they're favorable, yay. If they're not favorable, then we start the appeal process. So everything's kind of in a queue. So that, that's how I'm triaging a lot of this stuff. My priority is Scottsbluff County veterans and Banner County veterans. Uh, now if there's a one-off and I've got somebody that is really, really sick or they need some help now, uh, or possibility to become a homeless or they're over the age eighty-five, they may take a front seat real quick when I adjust their or file for their claim to make sure that I take care of that veteran. So there is a little bit of triage involved, Mr.
Is there any attempt, and I, I might answer my own question, I attempt from these other counties for some reimbursement?
Not on my part. So I, you know, all those positions have been filled minus Kimball County now. So it, it was just, you know, for our office, get a little bit of an influx and then, and, and really it's, it's not only happening here. I mean, if a guy doesn't like my answer in Scottsbluff County, he's gonna hop to Laurel County and get the answer he wants, you know? Or if he doesn't like my opinion, he may go reach out to another VSO on a, a county near us just to say, hey, you know, this is what Matt said, what are your thoughts? I encourage it. Uh, at my golf tournament this, you know, a couple of weekends ago or last weekend, weekend before last, um, you know, Fred was up there, he's a Cheyenne County VSO and I had one of the Garden County VSOs out there and I said, hey, if you guys didn't like what I told you in my office, please, these two gentlemen behind me, come talk to them and see if they have a better way ahead for you. I've only got a year and a half, a little over a year and a half of experience, so. Granted, I have a, an ace in the hole with John Brem, so I, I called John Brem and I'm like, hey, you know, what are your thoughts on this? So I, I continue to use John. But I had two other VSOs at the golf tournament that if you wanted a new opinion, they just don't want Matt's version of the story to get it. So, and some veterans shot. I mean, they, they don't like the answer they got in one county, so they come over to our county and they wanna see if I can get them service connected. Uh, and vice versa.
But your, but your increase, your increase in veterans is due to the fact that the, number one, they like what you're doing. The word's getting out.
True.
And, and your workload has increased. And you're asking for ten thousand dollars from a part-time person to help with that increase?
Correct.
Okay.
And part of that too is Congress has passed the PACT Act, which, it fits a lot of veterans. And so, and that's being shared quite openly out in the media, and so that's creating veterans to, to come in to see compensation.
Uh, and, and one of the big things, the big takeaway from that is PACT Act opened it up to all these guys that served in Thailand, America Samoa, Guam, guys that have been dying for any other way to save for years and not been able to get help because they weren't boots on ground in Vietnam and/or within twelve nautical miles. So PACT Act, the big rush for that was the suspend date was the fourteenth of this month. Right? So we had a year to get retroactive pay for all those folks. That is over. So that big rush, I mean, that, that was a year's worth of us trying to assist these veterans that for years and years have not been able to get service connected.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with, with a part-time person in Matt's budget?
The one he already had in there?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I never.
Okay, let's just keep it in then. We'll find it somewhere else if we have to.
Chris, you have any?
Yeah. Thank you, Matt. Kurt? What, what, was there anything else in yours that we needed to discuss?
If you had any questions, I can answer them.
Okay, you did, you did a substantial cut in yours and we appreciate that. Although you're not gonna get the other fifty buses that you wanted, but at least, at least not right now. Your vis- your visit is there, we appreciate that, we really do. Don't, don't, don't get us wrong. Uh, who else? Steve, did you have anything else to?
Questions, I guess if you got.
You got another eight hundred thousand somewhere laying around?
I'm just tired of you. That's it.
He's quiet over here now. What are you gonna?
I'm just waiting for you to make a move.
Not making a word. Chris?
Uh, I was just here, uh, asked by Charlie's previous meeting to provide some additional data on our costs.
Come on up.
You, you had emailed me, uh, a sheet of monthly statements.
Sure, invoice that we provide to Lisa, correct?
Pardon me?
Uh, and invoice that we provide to Lisa.
Yeah, so that only covers like, uh, two-thirds of the.
Sure. Uh, and in the budget, you know, I don't invoice her for telephone services. Right, that's ALO or another vendor, right? So we don't do that.
Okay.
Our only expense there is the line item of two eleven oh two. Uh, service renewals, some of that goes to maybe, uh, MIPS we pay for. Uh, the ShoreTel phone system here sends a bill that says, hey, does it have warranty on your equipment? They send that directly through, I think, connecting point gives us that, so.
Can you tell them where that's at in the book here, they should be able to watch it?
What? Oh, his budget, oh. His budget? I think it's on the day four stuff. I don't.
Keep turning?
Yeah, keep going.
Back here.
And then I guess, yeah, then we gotta back up. Can you help? Or Ashley?
It's right before, can you help?
It's right before?
Cause I think he's asking, yeah, is there any numbers? Where we can go with stuff? To get finalized. Okay, it's information, all right. Like, I was looking for bytes, I couldn't find them. Okay, Chris, go ahead if you would.
And, and so really, I, I think Russ, my question for you is what data are you exactly looking for?
Oh, I, you know, I'm just trying to get it to balance. I couldn't get this to balance.
Right.
I'm looking at a three hundred and ten thousand expenses, what you're, you're billing the same amount every month. You know, I'm looking at a hundred and ninety thousand difference.
Right, so that, that, that's ours, right? Again, eleven oh two, it's probably the same on your sheet.
Yeah.
Is the computer consultant's, uh, fee. And so that's the one that we've had there and it bills out, I believe, at twenty-five nine per, per month.
And that includes the, in the web, the, the hybrid.
Hybrid hosting, so that includes, and, and it's, it's really hard to, to break down. I can kinda go through some of it, but uh, for instance, three thousand tickets or so are generated by Scottsbluff County in regards to work requests.
A month, a week?
So, a year, a year.
A year, okay.
Um, and so, you know, we fill all those calls.
How many?
Three thousand. So there's three thousand tickets that get generated. Some of them are customer-facing, more than half. Some of them are systems alerting us to possible issues, right? Storage is full, RAM's having issues. There's just a, a bunch of different alerts that come through. And so, you know, we have a team of, of, of three people to answer the phones there, uh, which allows, of course, someone like John to focus on issues at hand here, right? Not picking up the phone all day long and going, all right, let me come to your desk. He'd be stuck at his day, uh, at his desk all day long trying to work through that. So it includes all of the support that the county submits. Uh, it includes all of our project labor and our project management. Uh, and I went out and just did some cost comparisons. Uh, we just did the Microsoft three sixty-five upgrade. The average price, uh, industry-wide is a hundred and fifty per user. At two hundred and seventy users, that would have been a forty thousand dollar project bill to have that done. We're also upgrading, uh, twenty-one of the servers are going end of life in October. Uh, Microsoft says, hey, two thousand and twelve is no longer supported, get to twenty nineteen. There's twenty-one servers and those average about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a server. So that's another thirty-one thousand dollars that does not get billed to the county, right? That's part of the all-you-can-eat twenty-five nine that we put in. That also includes John's salary. Uh, and we agreed to this hybrid hosting deal, I think, two years ago on a five-year deal. Now, I would ask anybody here who wouldn't mind signing up for the same price, knowing what we know today about the increase in prices. I give John a raise, a cost of living raise every year. So for five years, you know, we will be covering his raise and we will not have raised our fee for those five years, which is what we agreed to. And the counties' ask at that time was like, hey, we don't wanna see a bunch of up and down costs coming out of our IT.
Well, I don't mind the downs so much.
Sure.
It gets up every year.
Sure. And I actually went out to kind of help out with this. Charlie asked me to do some cost comparisons. Uh, and so I went out and looked through and I, I have this information for all of you to kinda go through this, cause I was interested also in what that looked like. So these are cost comparisons to some, I guess, similar counties from what I could find, what I could find posted on the auditor's website of the budgets, budgets that were provided. Some of them don't have fiscal year twenty twenty-four available yet. So I couldn't get that information. But if you look at Scottsbluff County, now, I'm hoping I'm reading your guys' budget correctly, but the file with the auditor was a spend of sixty million, seven eighty-seven, seven forty-two, which, which was submitted for twenty twenty-two. The percent of spend that the county does on IT of that is point nine percent. So point nine percent of the budget is allocated to IT expenses. We had a fiscal year increase of IT of four percent. Uh, if you look at Buffalo County, for instance, which has a similar spend of sixty-three million dollars, they spend one point eight percent on their IT budget. Uh, if you look at Buffalo County, for instance, which has a similar spend of sixty-three million dollars, they spend one point eight percent on their IT budget. Uh, if you look at Sarpy County, I know, uh, Charlie asked about Sarpy County, uh, they spend one point four percent of their budget, and they had a fiscal year increase of eighteen percent. Uh, Laramie County, which is out of Cheyenne, they spend one point eight percent, uh, and they had a fiscal year increase of twenty percent. And Buffalo County is actually a pretty good comparison, if you guys flip over to the last page. You will see line item two eleven oh two, computer consultant. In twenty nineteen, their fee was two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And tw- and the proposed budget for last year was three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So in two years, they went from two thirty-six to three sixty-three. So they spend, and their maintenance agreement, so they spend seven hundred thousand dollars on just their support. They also spend another four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on hardware.
Do you do theirs?
Huh?
This isn't yours?
No, this isn't ours, no, this is.
Somebody else's?
Yeah, this is somebody else's.
Okay.
But this is somebody I could find that operates in a similar way that we do, where you guys, you know, you source your IT to somebody else.
Yeah.
I tried to look for somebody that sent, that spent the same amount of money, but how did they allocate that? And I guess the story I'm trying to tell is, our price has been the same, they went up a hundred thousand dollars in two years. And so we're trying to keep cost low, uh, and, and honestly, looking at some of these numbers, we're probably not charging enough, right? I mean, our, our, our fees are there, and they're likely gonna go up in a couple of years when I assume the county will go out for bids, you know? Like, we would expect you to do is go out and say, okay, we've had our five years, uh, and now it's time to rebid this. Uh, but I wanted to kinda show what that would look like. Now Hall, uh, I believe it's Hall County, they do it internally. So if you look through their budget items, they don't have a computer consultant, but they spend four hundred and six thousand dollars on staff alone. Now, a lot of that is they have an official salary of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, they do have health insurance, which I'm not aware of what the county pays, or if you guys are like, hey, if you wanna take this back inside, I'm gonna guess to run efficiently and not end up like you guys did when we came on board, you're gonna need three, three staff in your IT department. So I don't know what health insurance looks like for a staff of three, uh, but that would probably add to that bottom line. So you're spending three or four hundred thousand dollars on personnel, that people get sick, people leave, people take vacations. Um, the, the staff is likely not able to take care of everything they even were able to, um, because there's expertise that they're gonna be lacking. The three sixty-five stuff doesn't come up very often.
We went down that road once before.
Sure, of course. Uh, and so I just tried to go out and pick something similar, looking at the auditor's website, uh, to find some numbers that would show a comparison of what other counties are doing. And from the raw numbers, we are spending point six percent on average less for IT than other counties.
Who else in the area does what you do?
Nobody. Totally. There's, there's other, there's other, there's other IT companies.
But not here?
There, there are, I mean, there are, there are a couple more in town. I know there's a, there's a Interlinks, uh, there's ERH, um, but it's, I don't know their exact numbers, but I believe my service desk of, you know, seven or ten is, is bigger than their entire company. So I don't believe they would have the support structure in place to do that. I could be wrong, I don't, I'm not inside their business, um, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we really started this managed service thing because people wanted one bill, right? They were tired of going, well, now what do I need to do? Your servers are needed upgraded. Okay, well, I've gotta spend a hundred thousand dollars. I want all-you-can-eat, right? And I don't want you, cause what we would see happen is people were afraid then to do things. Well, I don't wanna call a ticket in. Why? Because it's gonna cost me a hundred and twenty-five dollars for this work, so let me just let it go, right? But now you're saying, hey, for this price that we're charging you, it's all-you-can-eat. You know, if, if we could ask to come into the detention center, I helped lead up the project for the new camera system. That's not something that we originally signed up to do, you know, the camera system, the old Matrix that was there, that was twenty-plus years old. But we jumped in, we helped lead that conversation, I helped organize that, and I believe it's been successful out there, and they're really.
It has.
They're really happy with it. Uh, but that was something we would take on. And so I think there's a big difference too with just the way Bytes cares about the county and wants to do what's right for you guys and for everybody here. And I don't believe you're gonna get that same level of service from anybody else. I've seen it time and time again where they're like, nope, you've signed the contract, this is the camera system, you guys deal with it. If you guys want us to deal with it, we're gonna send you a bill for that. Right, we're gonna have change orders, right? But that's outside of the contract, right? Cause we could do that, I could say, no, that was your server infrastructure, that wasn't camera infrastructure you guys signed up for. We're gonna send you a change order for that, and it'll cost you an extra twenty thousand dollars. So we're really trying to hold true to, you know, we're seeing a cost increase, right? There's no, the price that we did two years ago has gone up for us, just in personnel alone, John's raises, equipment costs have gone up. Uh, we just replaced three hosts here, and we just purchased your new backup unit that you guys use to store your data. Now, those costs have gone up twenty to thirty percent. Didn't pass it all on to the county, that's just something that we tried to build in, but of course, it's, it's gone way higher than we thought.
But we're also at a point that we have upgraded to a point that, that big upgrades aren't gonna happen again.
Yeah, it'll, you know, it'll be, it'll be five to seven years.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And so.
Like I know what I'm talking about.
But i- i- and, and, you know, even more informa- I mean, just to kinda go through, and I, I think this is good for, you know, I think a couple of commissions here were never part of the initial discussions. If you wanted to do managed IT infrastructure services, which is what they call this, right? They used to be break-fix, which break-fix was really good for partners because why would I fix something if the only way I get paid is if it breaks? I'm gonna come in and fix it for you, but I'm not gonna fix the root cause because I want you to call me again because I can come fix your, your problem, right? And then I get paid for it. If I say, you know what, you know what's really causing this problem? Let me dig in for you and let me get that solved, and that takes away a revenue stream. So a long time ago, Bytes made the decision that that's not the way we wanna do business, right? We don't wanna just, hey, you know, this is broken, I'm gonna keep coming back and keep fixing it for you, but I'm not gonna fix the root cause. So how about you, you get on a managed IT services? That way we cover everything, that way there's no questions when you call in and go, well, this isn't working. You know what? We'll come look at it and take care of it for you. No questions asked. If you went out today, the average cost per user to get managed IT services is between one fifty and two fifty a user. So if you guys were to go out for bid and say, hey, I want everything, it could range from one fifty to two fifty per user, which puts you guys at forty to fifty thousand dollars a month, plus hardware, plus everything else. That would just be that line item two eleven oh two.
Talking labor.
Yeah, I'm just, and, and really, they talk about what things could, could increase that price. Do you need technicians to go on site regularly? Well, we provide a full-time staff, right? John is also, uh, you know, we hired John on, so John's a Bytes employee. I know we took him on with the transition. Uh, how many locations do you have, right? If you have one versus seven, do you need extra cybersecurity? Uh, do you only need basic network monitoring, you know? How many servers do you have? Well, you need any project to work done. So that's all those things that would add that up to go, well, at two fifty a user, now you're paying sixty thousand dollars a month just for what would be that line item eleven oh two. So you change that from, you know, you're, you're talking, you know, eleven oh two goes up drastically. And so I did the best I could with the information that was out there. And Russ, if there's additional questions or additional things I can try to answer, I would love to be, to get you to say, you know what, I understand now.
I'm starting to understand a lot more just by looking, going back and re-looking at this after you explained that to me. Cause it doesn't show it to me by looking at that.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody, and, and the hard thing is, is invoicing for everything we do, right? I'm not gonna go back home tonight and go, well, I spent two hours here, so I'm gonna submit a ticket, and you guys are gonna get a bill for that. You know, we have quarterly meetings, uh, with our account manager that comes in, talks to the staff, understands like how are things going? That's done. I assisted with the SLGC funding that came out for the state local cybersecurity grants, uh, working with Charlie on that, right? We helped fill that up, we helped facilitate that. So we're doing all those things that I don't believe everybody else is going to do for you, uh, the way we're doing it today. So, and I think the last thing I have is, I'm not here to sell you guys on Bytes or what we do. I'm not coming in trying to earn your business. I believe that we have held up our end of the bargain, and you guys are seeing the results of that, right? In two years, you're gonna get people to come in and try to bet it, they're gonna say they can do it better, they're gonna say they can do it cheaper, but you guys have tried that before. You guys have tried cheaper, you guys have tried getting by. And my understanding is, you know, I wasn't an employee, I wasn't here, it, it wasn't working out. So I think it's working out today, and judging from it, we're probably gonna continue to see costs go up. Looking at four percent increase is great, we're trying to keep it as low as we can, but other counties are investing eighteen to twenty percent more, but they're also spending twice as much, so that.
And they're not getting the service.
Possibly, you know, I, I don't know, I'm hoping some of these consultants are doing a good job, uh, but I don't know their business details. Uh, they're not Bytes, um, and I think we do a, a really good job, so I'm always gonna say that though, so.
Well, I, I, you know, I could tell you that if you weren't doing the, the job that you need to, we'd be hearing about it.
Yeah.
Or somebody'd be hearing about it, you'd be hearing about it.
Sure.
Or John, John would be hearing about it.
You know, I don't believe that, we're, 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 other counties are coming to us saying, hey, we've talked to, we've talked to people, and they're, that's why they're signing up.
I wonder why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you put, do you put an employee in those other counties?
We don't, um, mainly John was here for, he's gonna be going on almost twenty years, seventeen years now? Is it seventeen years? And so, no, it, some of them don't require, we can do.
They're a lot smaller.
Ninety percent of our job remotely, right? We have places in, we have a, a, a big facility in West Virginia we support. Uh, now, they do have staff internally, that's not our staff, but we can do most of our stuff remotely, so, uh, yeah, it's pretty rare that.
You have something to add, John?
You're needing someone on site. What did I close last year? Twenty-four thousand tickets.
Yeah.
Most days, I'm consistently busy. This, uh, between all of our buildings, we generate a lot of orders, and some of them need a rapid response for the, you know, the judges, uh, the sheriff's department, or especially the communications center. There's a lot of components to, um, what do we have, twenty-two offices, twenty-two offices. There is a lot going on, and we really do need a full-time person.
And we can spend a lot of time talking about the little things that come up, right? We offer twenty-four seven coverage, right? So if the comm center calls after hours, which they have before, we're on it right then, you know, we have on-call staff to take care of that, right? We provide that as, as part of that. Um, and so just, yeah, budgeting, right? We assist with the budgeting, I mean, it's just, there's a lot there that I couldn't, you know, you guys could get an invoice ten pages long, and I'll list out everything that we're doing, but nobody's gonna sit around and wanna read that.
Russ will.
Yeah.
Right.
So Russ, if you have any additional, I mean, you know.
No, I just, you know, we ask people to come in, see if there's any room to trim these things, if we can, we're trying to get in, in budget, get, get our budget in line.
I understand that. And if there's any clarification needed in the future, I'm, I'm happy to set up time to discuss it again. I think we are going to kinda run through some numbers again, and at some point in the future, kinda have that similar discussion. We had to kinda show you guys why you chose to go that direction, uh, just on the, kinda the hybrid hosting, we cover maintenance costs, we cover licensing, things like that, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Did you have an estimated cost per user?
Uh.
I was just making a note.
That we have here?
Yeah.
Uh, ours would be ninety-nine dollars.
Yours was ninety, okay. Just something I keep for myself.
That, that's a year?
Uh, ninety-nine dollars per user per month. And ag- again, like I said, I, I have three of them, but I, and I just did it, you know, I didn't play favorites, I searched on Google, and the first three hits. Um, one fifty, two hundred a month, one twenty-five to one seventy-five, and one twenty-five to two fifty. And it all depends on, hey, if I have one location, twenty users, no big deal. Well, I have a comm center, right? I have a detention center, I need twenty-four seven support, oh, that's gonna jump you up to one fifty a user. Oh, I need all my project work. So there's a scale that they use, of course, and they don't spell that out for their services, but, yeah. And I calculated ours, and it was ninety-nine dollars. And that'd be one twenty-five to two fifty, depending.
Okay, two fifty.
Okay. Chris, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
And I would, I would just mention that when this does go out for bid, in, in three years, four years?
Right, I think it's two more years.
Two more years?
It won't be a apple-to-apples, you know, spec sheet, you know, like we're on a road grader. It'll be, it'll be an RFP, it'll be our request for proposal, um, you know, cause every, every company's gonna offer something different, so.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure, you know, I'm more than happy to spend time with the group to make sure that, I want you guys to, if it's not with us, and you guys get the same level of service or better at cheaper costs, then that's a win for you guys. So I just wanna make sure when that time comes, you guys are asking the right questions, right? Do you offer a service desk? Do you have a staff dedicated to answer the phones? Or am I answering the phone as the technician and then coming out to your facility to work on your equipment? What happens if something happens in the community or the valley that requires me, and I have a staff of three people? How do I go attack four businesses that are impacted? Well, we can do it, cause we have twenty-two. I don't know how many else can do it if they have a staff of three or four, it's gonna be difficult for them. So be more than willing to help out to make sure you guys are asking the right questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, John, for your, your work, appreciate it. Okay, Lisa, anybody, is there, I think Steve already asked you, you're pretty much done? Lisa, back to you on totals? Where are we at?
Your levy now is point three nine six, which is lower than it's been, it's in my time, anyway, at this point, and pink postcard would require another eight hundred thousand.
Well, I've, I mean, if we can't freeze, if there's, there's open positions that have not been filled, that need to be filled, maybe we start looking at positions we have that could be ripped. Maybe we look at the cash reserve and trim that by five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. Um, I'm, I'm trying to come up with ideas, I'd like to, here's some more ideas from the board. That's, those are my, those are my ideas.
That's not even two months of payroll.
That's, yeah. Your cash reserve is not two months of payroll.
That's not even two months of payroll. Hey, two months of payroll is three million dollars.
But we, we set it at twenty percent?
That can't be right, if we're on fourteen ninety total.
What's your questions?
Did you ask, did, when we set the cash reserve to be three point five million, didn't you say that was a healthy twenty percent?
Um, I was talking the other day of should our cash reserve be a certain percentage of what we are tax-asking, not the expenses? So that number would, it's, uh, this one is where I wanted it. So two point five is like twenty-two percent of our tax-asking.
Well, the other, the other piece of this cash reserve that I don't quite agree with is we are, we're not Jimmy Johns, we're not Taco de Oro, we're not a private business who has to draw customers in. We are a tax cartel that can, that levies taxes and people don't have a choice, where the, I understand some people are not gonna pay their taxes, but we don't have any competition. Nobody from Scottsburg County is gonna go shop for better tax rates and say, I'm gonna send my taxes to Banner County instead. You know, we, we have revenue that we can pretty much guarantee is coming in. So I don't know that a twenty, twenty percent budgeted cash reserve is, is required of a governmental agency, taxing agency.
I would just comment on a couple things, and that's that.
That's for, for three eight maybe?
The, we need to certainly declare what cash reserve that we think that is required, because I absolutely am not interested in using that cash reserve to, um, adjust the budget. We gotta decide what's needed, what's required, and then stick to it, because anything else is simply spending the money in most cases. And, um, certainly cash reserves are important, and at what level that is exactly, um, it's somewhere in that twenty percent. The worst things that could happen is some type of emergencies requiring, I'm, normally we're talking, um, things like, um, weather emergencies or some things like that that could come up, that extra money's needed. And, um, those are the type of emergency things that I see that might be. And, um, those are the type of emergency things that I see that might be money needed for, that you would need before the fis- the next fiscal year, when you can ask for it at tax time. But, um, the other point that I would say here, and that's, uh, that Charlie said it, I thought, well, when we started this process, and, um, there were two or three or four things, but he said, I don't wanna do the pink postcards, and I wanna be at a level that we don't have to do that. He said, uh, what else did you say? There were three.
Lower, lower, lower the levy.
Lower the levy, which, the mill levy, yeah, which is, should be, with this kind of an increase in valuation, oughta be a no-brainer.
No pink postcards.
No pink postcards.
No bonding.
No bonding.
Raise and give raises.
Right, and be able to, to do that. And I agreed with all of those, and I would only, um, remind people, you me- you remember when we did property tax protest? Lee Glenn was here, and he said, Scottsburg County, what did he say, the second highest, I think he said, for mill levy in the state, for county mill levy? And, um, I don't know if that's correct or not, but I do know that five years ago, we were the third highest, only behind Sarpy County and Douglas County, I believe. And, um, for some reason, um, we have considered that to be acceptable. And it is true, as Charlie would suggest, that, um, I'm of the opinion that, um, there may be some places that, um, the level of service that we have across the board, possibly across the board, I, I'm just saying, we would look across the board, but some are certainly my little pet areas where I'd be saying, no, we can't cut that. But where I'd be saying, yeah, we, we could cut some. And, um, one of the things that we've never done with this budget process, um, is start early on with a goal in mind. We simply ask people to give us a budget, and they come here, and it doesn't, there's no intent at all of where, what the target was. They don't have a target, none, no one gives them a target. It's bring your budget, whatever you think you need. And I, I don't know, I'm, generally speaking, I'm not involved with very many budgets that way. Doesn't matter how much it is, just tell us what you need. And I'm not used to doing business that way. So, um, I know we have, again, I think we have, maybe we've identified it, maybe we haven't, this ace in the hole, what I thought was six hundred thousand. I'm assuming that beyond all of that, we're still gonna come at the end and wanna talk about a COLA, would that be true?
Yep.
So, everything we've been cutting for getting down to the nine hundred thousand or whatever, was simply to get to there, and then apply whatever COLA, and try and figure out how we were gonna deal with that.
Gotta bring up the question.
The COLA question?
Absolutely.
I agree.
Absolutely, Mark Harris.
Well, I agree with that, and I can't figure out for the life of me, why can't we make that decision upfront?
You tell us not to, Mark, don't put the COLA in.
And have these people. I, I never have. I never have.
Oh, sorry.
I think it's been, I think, don't put the COLA in, that comment has been, don't hide it in there, don't hide it in the budget, and then cut, so that we can put it back in, or have room for it. I think that's what those comments have, over the years, that's kinda what I've, I've noticed.
Is that how you think I put my budget together?
Yeah, we hide things, Kelly.
No, like, I'm, that's not why I give you guys.
Heather, what do you hide?
I've, I've never seen anybody do that.
We've, we've had years, we've had years where we've included a COLA at the beginning of the budget session. Ten, twelve years ago, we started with a COLA and built the budget around the COLA. So it's been done.
Was it better, or was it like this?
It all ended up the same. We still ended up cutting.
Is that because you ended up cutting the COLA amount, because you know, there have been, there have been years where we've only gotten a half percent?
We ended up cutting. The one, the one year we ended up, we, the one year we ended up cutting people.
Mm-hmm, I remember that.
Yeah. I believe it was, uh, we lost some folks out the detention center.
Mm-hmm.
In order, in order to meet the COLA, it was, it was one or the other.
That might have been the year that, I don't think we got a COLA that year. I think you lost people at the detention center, and we didn't get a COLA.
Yeah, I don't remember, I, I do know we started out with the COLA, we built the budget around the COLA, got to the end, and ended up still cutting people.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I'm not in favor of that, I'll, I'll put, go on record right now.
No.
I think we're at, our staffing levels are where they need to be. And if they're not where they need to be, then our supervisors aren't doing their job.
Staffing levels, you're talking about?
Right. If Steve is sitting back here with three or four too many people, then he's not doing his job. Correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just making a statement. You got people standing around with nothing to do, then, then we need to talk about that. But the detention center's the same way, or anyplace else. That doesn't mean it can't happen. It doesn't mean in an emergency situation, we may have to, you know, but I don't think we're at that point right now. I think we have some other areas that we can look at.
So I guess we could start with, you know, where does the board think the cash reserve needs to be?
Where do I look?
I haven't made any changes. I haven't made any.
Are, where, where are we, eight hundred and five thousand?
Two points. Are there two points something, or three points something?
That's lowering the levy, eight hundred and five thousand, and we didn't go to pink postcard last year, so we are beating inflation.
We don't have any room between now and the pink postcard, you can't move it up. You're at the max of your levy.
I'm not at the max of my levy, you've lowered the levy.
No. No, I'm saying, the next step up puts us in the pink pro- postcard area.
Oh, we are in the pink postcard area, yeah, by having a red line there.
We are in the pink.
We have to cut eight hundred and five thousand dollars total.
What is the pink postcard, going to the pink, not going to pink postcard do for you? Is that a goal of your political campaigns?
I don't have a political campaign, but.
I think the state legislature set a goal for local taxing entities to not grow by more than two point five five percent a year, and that should.
But your, but your value itself grew that much more.
And it grew by over eight percent.
And that you're still lowering, you're still lowering the levy, but you're still, and you might be around that three percent, but our value grew by more than eight percent, and we're not ask tax asking for the full eight percent.
Right, and that's why the pink postcard was built around the, the theory of, what was your value last year?
But we've still.
Right, and then they said, two percent above that, plus the growth, which in this case is point five five, and so that's, that's two point five five. And, um, obviously, um, it's not what you like to hear, but, um, it is okay with me.
Lisa, did, did we move a million ahead from last year?
It's okay with you to, for one part.
To be at two point five five, and not send out a pink card.
I don't know what you're asking.
I sent out, I sent out the card.
When does this have to be final? When, when do we have to?
We've gotta know, by September. We have to let the assessor know in order to do the postcards by like, the fourth?
September fourth?
I don't remember what the date was.
They had until the fourth to get the information, we requested by September first, we picked the date of.
September twentieth.
September what?
Twentieth. Or, that's the actual meeting.
The actual, the hearing.
We never brought any money forward when I needed it?
What do you mean? Yes, there's three million sitting in the general fund, there is so much sitting in the other funds, um, I think I gave all of that to you up at the front of your books.
Oh, I'm just looking at here, it's showing that.
Front, front? At the front of the books, it has all the fund balances, and I said, and somehow yours got turned around.
I know, mine are printed backwards, I know.
No, perhaps we could do.
It's upside down backwards, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it is, isn't it?
It's printed wrong. But it's okay.
Now, I'm kinda new at this, but the, there's kinda a white elephant in the room that nobody talks about is, by getting our budget in line, that may affect services also. Uh, what services are we willing to reduce? 'Cause I'd like to maintain the same standards of service, like for our county roads, our, uh, office staffs, but, uh, bringing our budget in what we think is in line, uh, it definitely could have an effect on some services we provide our constituents.
I'd, I'm a, I.
Absolutely.
I think you're right on, Mike, and I think that there's, I think, you know, it might require an executive session to discuss which positions, um, could be ripped, um, there's, I've, I just have a couple in mind.
Right.
Um. Public safety is number one. And, um. Yeah, there's, I mean, we, we provide a lot of services that maybe, maybe aren't the role of government, um. I still don't think we've identified what that ace in the hole was, though, that margin.
Wow, it was five hundred thousand dollars.
Five or six.
Five or six hundred, yeah.
And I, and I can't, I don't, I thought maybe it was keynote, but I think we already moved that, maybe it was inheritance tax, but I think we've already counted for that. Special projects, was it special projects?
That sounds about right.
It was special projects.
That's the sheriff's money.
Hmm, no. It was, it was inheritance tax.
Wasn't special projects, um, yeah, because that's not, that is the sheriff's stuff.
Okay.
And it's, it's only a two hundred thousand dollar.
It was, it was either five or six hundred thousand, and we specifically said if we needed to go to that, we could use that. I don't recall what it was.
Transfer to, I think it's that transfer, yes, it's that transfer to general fund.
And it's already there?
And you've put that much money into general fund?
Can I ask, um, a question that may or may, may not, it's probably not related to what we're talking about, but Lisa, you gave us this form earlier tonight?
The levy limits, yeah.
Right, and so.
And it's, it's outdated now.
Yeah, but those, um, those other entities, Ag Society, Airport Authority, um, fire districts, irrigation districts, some of those. So, um, if they're part of our levy and levy limit, um, do we have any say or control over those?
Um, you only have to give three and a half percent to Airport Authority.
What do they give?
Three and a, um, oh, let's see, I gotta pull up Kelly's spreadsheet if I still have it.
Three and a half, wow, yeah, three and a half plus, I thought it was.
But how, how do we?
She'll get like three hundred twenty thousand in tax asking.
Roll down.
Do these?
Oh, was I, oh, excuse me, one point five million, or one point two million is the piece of our levy.
And I'm not, I'm not particularly, um, talking about any of that for this year particularly, but I'm interested in how that process works for the future. And, um, is there?
And they just turn in a form to Kelly, for, that must have been granted when they put together an airport authority, and we are required to give them a proportion of our levy. 'Cause we, they, we used, they used to be part of our.
There's a process. On the fire district.
Budget.
Part of our budget.
They used to be part of our budget, now we split them off.
It takes a vote of that fire district to do that, and we were looking to do that back in the Dick Douglas.
But they also have a limit too, that they can charge, and they're not.
The airport's thirty-five.
For both of you.
Uh-huh.
For instance, last year, I'm gonna give a rough number, I'm thinking the county got twenty-two percent the rest of these people. Did you hear what I said?
Like the, the fire districts, for example, can have.
There's a way to do that, but it takes, it takes it hold of that district, especially, especially all of that district.
At point one zero five.
And they're removed from this, from this sheet, they do their own, it comes, it comes, it's no longer included with ours. I, I can't explain all of it to you, Dick Douglas explained it to us, and we almost went to it, but it was a, it was kind of a long drawn out thing.
'Cause we're, we're limited in how much, 'cause that's what this whole levy business is about. We can't, between us and the airport authority and these districts, we can't levy more than fifty percent of their, our value.
But, but how do we control these other districts? They, they give us their numbers first.
Someday I'd like to have a lesson on how this works. But we don't have to do it tonight.
We've guaranteed, by giving an airport authority, they get three and a half percent levy.
What's the, this is how much the airport authority can have.
Can we cut, I got a quick, quick question, can we cut weed chemical by twenty-five thousand? They only spent twenty-four thousand last year, we've got twenty.
How much are you asking for this year?
He's asking for fifty, he spent twenty-five thousand last year.
I don't know why not.
There was a reason that he.
It's 'cause he didn't have enough people to spray the chemical, but the year before.
I think we should consolidate that.
The year before, he spent thirty thousand, the year before, he spent forty-one, the year before that, he spent thirty-six thousand.
What's his total budget right there, Charlie? His name?
Hundred sixty-five.
Hundred sixty?
No, he spent one sixty-five last year, he's asking for one ninety-nine five this year.
I think we could consolidate that, do better than that.
I'd like to set the, I would like to set the weed budget at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And part of his is, he's got a big portion of the insurance, but. But that was just how Nirmas stuff came about, or was calculated out?
That'd also be, I mean, I.
The liability on that's probably high, or is that what's gonna drift?
He's got a lot of money in repairs and, uh, repairs, repair pickups, thousand bucks in lodging. thousand bucks in lodging.
Did you read his budget later?
A thousand bucks in printing and publishing, which is pretty close to what he needs to spend.
Do you have any carryover from last year, Charlie?
He started the, the year with nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
In his fund, which is probably a lot why he has to ask for more from the general fund this year. He started fairly low.
What's assessments? Seventy-five thousand?
That's his revenue for going out and doing s- weight spraying.
He's guesstimating, he's gonna bring that in, but he's.
When he had staff, he did.
He did pretty good with the hands job.
Yeah.
We did a lot of custom spraying and we've cut that out.
You don't have any help, he said.
I mean, it's a, he, he struggled to get anybody this year until the late July, I think is when he finally got his last year guy to come back.
Is he, is he certified?
Yeah, I believe so. Would you say?
Yeah, oh, you, you gotta go get tested. Steve's certified. I mean, it's not that hard to get, a lot, most farmers are all certified, that's all. You go to a college class.
Well, I would like, I mean, cut it, cut it by at least twenty-five thousand. Put him where his chemical was last year.
What if we, look at maybe consolidating that. You guys consider that?
Cut his revenue or cut his?
What's that?
What if we consolidate that?
Well, yeah, that mean, I mean, this, that's gonna take a whole nother three hour meeting, but what if we, you know, what if this, when, I mean, what if he was, worked under the roads department, or what if he, you know, what if we, I mean, Banner County hires us out, contracts us out, why don't we do that? You know, I mean, these are, these are the types of discussions that we should be having.
We don't have to contract it out.
We don't even have to have it?
We don't have to contract it out. We have people within our own organization that can do it.
I don't know that they're getting it. I don't know that they're, I think we would only contract it out as if, if it was cost savings. And these are the types of, I mean, this is.
I think we should consolidate it, cause after October, when the ground, when everything freezes, I mean, what, he has nothing to do till spring. We have to find some sort of, uh, occupation for that. There's a lot of time that's not being accounted for. What did we save on that county health, Lisa?
What's, and that was all Keno dollars is what it saved.
Okay.
Is there another hundred thousand we can move over from Keno? Heather, one question I have, I just came across, um, oh, in lieu of tax BLM, that's the monument, right?
Yeah.
I couldn't find that earlier. I saw all these other, in lieu of, I didn't see that one, but I just saw.
Lisa, the line item, um, it's under administration general. That's six hundred thousand. That says refund prior year's expenditures.
In the revenue section.
Uh huh.
Okay.
So, that, um, tell me what that is again.
Okay, well, it can be if some, something is refunded to us, we paid a bill and then we find out that we shouldn't have paid it, or something changed, we can drop it in that line. That was where I was, I was saying, I, maybe I should have moved this, but my first year, Jerry had put money into this budgeted homestead exemption loss. And the auditor of public accounts sent back his budget and said, you can't do that. So, he just did this move where he just put it in, six hundred thousand into prior year expenditures. And I've maintained that, so, but you can see where we've dropped a couple little payments in the last couple of years, so. I guess I'm being very honest about that. That's, they'll, they'll say you shouldn't budget for that refund, the, the property tax credit or the homestead exemption loss. So.
That technically the homestead exemption is gonna wash. Does it sometimes carry over to another fiscal year or anything? Should be in the same fiscal year?
Yeah, you're, well, yeah, I guess it does because you get a payment in July.
In July, wow, so.
So, you get a payment, but you're pay, so you're first, you're technically supposed to get six equal payments of homestead, but homestead is also affected by tax corrections because the state can go back and they can audit homestead and either take it away from people or give it to people if they've decided that something's been calculated incorrectly. So, our first payment in February and our last payment in July, um, may not equal the six equal payments.
But it's not gonna be substantially off, I'm assuming.
This year it was like thirty thousand, I think we got thirty thousand more.
Total. Add up four hundred and some thousand.
Let's say it.
So, ten percent, maybe.
But that was, I think, because a lot of stuff was not entered correctly last year.
And actually, we budgeted a million eighty-nine. Did I just say nine? No, that's not right. Seven one five seven in taxes and my tax number was nine million.
And, uh, so when we sold the motor bank and had that money, where did that show up at?
General fund.
We were short that much in the general fund. That's where we made up the balance last year.
General fund five thirty oh two.
Okay.
I'm assuming we're, we're talking about all sorts of different things here. That a cola is out of the question right now? We're discussing riffing people. We're discussing where else we're going to cut.
A three and a half percent cola is only gonna cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, six, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred and eighty-six forty-four.
So, in theory, we're really looking for a million dollars. If we wanna give a three and a half percentage.
If that's what we're gonna do, then that's what we need to be looking at then.
We need to find a million dollars.
Heather, what is this prior year expenditures? I mean, we're carrying them forward. Why we have worry about prior year expenditures? We're putting six hundred thousand in there.
That, I think, like she said, it's, if we get over payments or,
if we're right.
If we get overpaid, then we have to some, pay something back.
That's what she was talking about. That was what she was discussing. Wish we had an index. I could look, I could look up a golden page.
That would be something that she would generally see. Um, like she said, it would be like if you had to pay back on something that was like partially federally funded or partially state funded.
There's almost ten thousand dollars in public defender furniture and office equipment.
I know, we talked about that last year. He put nine thousand in last year and now ten this year. That never went away. That was something we discussed.
His mileage last year, he spent two thousand. He's asking for six thousand. Travel expenses, he's asking for seventy-four hundred. He spent four thousand last year. Contract services, he's asking for twelve thousand. He spent five thousand last year. Court costs, he's asking for four thousand. He spent seven hundred last year. Capital improvement, now you have capital improvement money to promote the roads to help with that, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Have we already, uh, have we already committed that capital improvement to roads?
Some of it. I don't think all of it.
I was reading it all. I was saying it was like three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and I think there was like two and a half million in there. Anyone taking notes on the, the ideas I'm throwing out, or am I just speaking to the wind?
No, no, we're listening, Charlie.
Listening, but I don't know if we're taking notes.
I got a question. Do we just manage the money for like our county business improvement? Like twicket club and, and what's that, or all that?
Yeah, so, so all that money is lodging tax.
Right.
It isn't even in this budget.
It's not tax asking.
It's not tax, yeah, it's not tax asking, so it's not coming from, it's not, it's not, not have any bearing on that two point five five percent.
We can't cut that and help us here. So, the capital improvement fund has two point nine million budgeted for projects.
And you took how much of that, Steve's gone?
I think he took, I think it might have been, I think we left two point five in there. So, I think we moved four hundred thousand to roads.
Try and make that better. I'm in capital improvement fund, if that helps you.
Hey, Lisa, we're discussing capital improvement fund. We took some out and gave it to roads.
Why?
We did give them.
Did, do you still have two point nine eight as projects?
Yeah.
So, two point nine eight is still in there?
Two, two point, two million five hundred eighty thousand has not been designated.
Two point two. And so, did you then already move seven hundred?
No.
Somewhere?
I haven't moved anything.
Haven't moved it, but it's designated down here below?
I, I s- In the capital improvement fund? I'm showing I brought over a hundred thousand from inheritance. We started off July one with two million four hundred ninety-four thousand. Hundred thousand come from inheritance, just to move some of that. And I have two, two million five hundred eighty thousand under projects. We haven't designated anything. Thirteen thousand eight eight three, that came from the ADA fund. A couple of years ago, I put it in there. We, we can only use it for ADA purposes, so, but.
Can I use it for election?
If for, you probably could.
I have a place where I need a pad holder or something.
Yeah, you're probably, if it's handicap accessibility.
Sorry, just. Do you, can I spend money? I need that.
So, how, how does everyone feel about pulling five hundred thousand out of projects and putting it into roads? Leave us with two million dollars in capital improvements.
Will I work doing that, Lisa?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm sure you are. I don't, you're supposed to, anyway, it's, we have the money sitting here for.
So, what does that do to our bottom line then?
Down to five hundred, I think, if we assume a cola.
And you realize that's money that's not coming back. And we learned yesterday in the seminar I went to, any big project you might wanna apply for federal, government wise, you've gotta have a good twenty percent of your project cost ready to, you gotta pony up a bunch of money too.
Right.
And if we have no funds, just make sure you realize that's how that works. Then we, we won't have funds to do it, so why, why apply?
Yeah, all those grants are matching grants. They're not a hundred percent. And it's very, most of them are equal. So, if it's a ten million dollar project, you go ahead, two million dollars is right there up front.
That's where your trade system works.
Or bonded.
Yeah, or bonded.
What's that?
So, we have two point nine million, and we're talking about taking five hundred out, which would leave us two point four million, right?
So, we're still over two million right now.
Well, I don't know where you came up with two point nine. I said you had two point five.
You have a, um, beginning fund balance of two point five, but up here in the, um, projects, you have two point nine eight. So, you had five hundred.
So, where's two point nine come from?
Well, it comes right here off of this sheet, which apparently on the revenue side, looks like two point four nine four, plus five hundred thousand from inheritance.
Oh, okay, cause I moved that the other day. I'd only moved a hundred thousand from inheritance and I had a mistake on my sheet. So, we only had moved a hundred thousand from inheritance.
So, we have four hundred instead of five hundred, is that what you're saying?
We have one hundred thousand, not five hundred thousand.
So, you moved four hundred.
I moved one hundred thousand, cause I had looked at my inheritance fund and I had already designated.
Because we're not getting inheritance in the way that we want.
Yeah, um.
There's inheritance tax changes that they.
So, you adjusted it because you thought you wouldn't get that much in?
Well, because I probably had a typo or a mistake, cause not, not everything ties. So, that's when I was looking through my funds. I'm like, uh-oh, I thought I had five hundred thousand to move, but no, I only moved a hundred thousand. So, I changed my spreadsheet here. That's where, okay, I'm sorry for the misunderstanding because yes, that was something that did change the other day when I was looking through.
So, our beginning balance is two point four nine four, correct?
When we were going bouncing. Yeah.
Okay.
So, now we have about two million dollars in that fund. Or two million that'll be left. Okay, now I gotta go back and fix my other stuff. Don't stop my mojo.
Should that ring a, should that?
Just a second, Russ, okay? One point seven one five. And I said five hundred thousand come from capital improvements. And I said five hundred thousand come from capital improvements. I'm down to two eighty three. And what's up? Makes the levy point three eight two two. So which road are you fixing? Experiment Farm or Highland?
Highland. What she's got together is Highland. Two miles of Highland from the sugar factory to the.
And were we talking about?
And I don't think it's worth the cost you're making all the rest of us, everybody else take, but what?
And was there, was there, what was the, the Keno? Were we looking at Keno also?
We did stuff with Keno the other day. I mean, I, I already put a hundred, almost two hundred thousand in the roads budget for Keno.
Okay.
We're, we're tanking all of our stuff to do this road.
No, we're doing another bridge.
No, you're taking all, you're, you're taking all. Well, I mean, it's, we've done other projects, but.
So we're still, we still need to find two hundred and eighty five, two hundred and eighty four thousand.
Where's the best example of what our cash reserve is?
There, three million thirty.
So we could take, we could take it out of there and still be pretty healthy, don't you think Lisa?
Don't ask me. Don't ask me. I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you my opinion at this point. If you guys think it's good, it's good. Thirty three. That'd be somebody's position. Who did you wanna?
That, that cash reserve. Three, or two point seven eight zero now?
Yes.
After the change?
After you just asked me, I took two hundred fifty thousand off of it.
Off the cash reserve?
Yes.
Okay. So now we need to find another thirty three thousand.
So the, um.
Well.
Where we show the cash reserve and then down here below that, I thought on that same sheet at the time. There's a total budgeted cash reserve of four point one million.
That was probably a previous thing. That was from like last year's sheets.
There's like a carryover of a million from last year and then three, the new amount, the new amount that was levied for. Well, I think I found twenty two thousand four hundred in the public defender's budget.
So Charlie brought up the position thing, so in my budget I have down in there for sixty thousand for an assistant.
For what?
For an assistant to help me out.
You put that in there? I thought we weren't gonna do that. You told me you weren't gonna do that.
I wanna take it out, no, because I'm afraid I'll never get it back. So if we take it out this year, am I gonna be able to put it back in there next year? Or am I gonna just be?
The assistant was, was your position when Linda was here.
Yes, I have the internal person who goes to take the test in fall here in October. And there's an outside person in the county that's interested, but. I mean, I could do it without it for a year, but I don't want it to be a permanent fixture. I don't think it's good to make it a permanent fixture, I guess.
You know, there's some, there's some things I, I would really like to sit down when this is all done. And really maybe just restructure a lot of things. I mean, you've got roads, transit, weed. You know, Kurt has done a ma, what Kurt has done for the bus service. If he could apply that same kinda stuff to the road department. I don't, I don't, I don't, I hate saying that here in a public meeting, but it's, because I don't know how Curtis feels about it, that, or how Steve feels about that. But those are the types of things I'm looking for.
People that can move things forward.
People that can, I mean, Harris said it in the meeting the other day, and I agree with him a hundred percent. Having Curtis in the private sector would be. Very, very valuable. We've got him in a situation now where he's. He wants, he wants to grow. He wants to flourish. He wants to build. And if we could, if we could have that. You know. Somewhere else besides buses. I think it would, I can think it could do the amazing thing for the county. And. You know, and so I'm not trying to pigeonhole anybody into this is what I want to see done, but if we could think along those lines. That's what I'm, you know, that's kinda what I'm in favor of.
See what you're saying, but you gotta remember to get those things done. It takes money.
Takes another man. You gotta fill his position.
You know, that sal, I mean, his salary there, plus the assistance salary at your place. You know, you combine those two and it's. You know, there's a sixty thousand dollar savings there.
I'd like to do that with the weed district cuz you know Jeff's gonna retire. He's not gonna be, you know, he's gonna retire. You know, he would have retired by this fall, but his wife needed insurance, so that's why he's staying on right now. Uh, those things could still be consolidated and save some money at some point.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's a, and that's a discussion that we can have.
That's a whole nother discussion. Is there a chance you could put that in there this year on us, or what do you think? Are you, are you really desperate for a assistant right now?
No, I mean, I've got my.
Well, you know, your, your guys, your foremen's are doing a really good job with backing you up. They're all backing you up pretty well.
Wants to try it and there's, there's a lot to learn. Just to get past the test sometimes.
Well, you're looking at sixty thousand. If you could bump one of the foremen up. A little and, and, and give him extra responsibility, you could still have an assistant.
Right, and that's a, that's a possibility.
Yeah, and not make it a full sixty thousand dollars and it's still within your budget.
You got Skylar right there. You could keep him if he, if he wants, if he wants to do that.
Give him some added, give him added responsibility and, and do what you need to do and still get you the help that you need.
But sure, help us right now if you can do that.
We're already two months into the fiscal year, right?
Right.
And at least that much.
How much am I, I've just taken out twenty five for right there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, taking out.
Steve budgeted for all his people all year long and he's been short people too.
I'm thinking, yeah, take out twenty five or thirty.
I'd take out the balance when you do. We need thirty three, is that right?
And you'd be about there.
Didn't I just do it? What did I do wrong?
And then I'd take off that.
Cuz you were looking, you were looking at sixty, Steve.
I'd take off that twenty six as well.
Yeah, and I.
That you have. I'd take off the twenty six.
Yeah, so we could clean this up.
That's what I'm saying, bump somebody up.
And that would get us where we need to be.
I think it does.
Well, we almost, we, we still gotta find another hundred. Hundred.
What? No, we're there. We're done.
No, I thought we were there.
No, we're there, but there's a cola in there.
Oh, you wanna go with the cola now, if that's what you wanna do? I thought they. Didn't the wages all increase? Two and a half, didn't we figure most of all the wages increased two and a half percent, or is that just a, a lot of them got a?
Only in the first, one through five, if, first five years, they get two and a half percent if they're an hourly employee. Well, if they achieve their goals and make a three or more, three or more average.
If they get a positive review and. How many of them get a positive review? Ninety five percent.
Or how many get a negative?
Yeah. It's two percent.
Two percent get a negative?
Well, that's, I'm guessing.
Oh, we could budget for some more interest, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, could be less.
Oh, now I'm to the good. Ten thousand six seventy four and then that's.
How much do I need for a?
Now you need a hundred and seventy.
We need another, we need another hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Let's do a one sale and get a cola going.
You could do a two and a half percent.
Well, and you, yeah, how about?
Charlie, you whittled it out. You shaved it down.
Well, that's what, okay, here's Heather's. O- opportunity, if we just do a two and a half percent cola, since you're moving up the steps, it's two and a half percent. Um, and then put the remainder in interest cuz she's.
Or, or some part of it in interest.
Killing it with interest right now.
So that, that cola would be paid in December or that one?
Cola gets just bumped up. Everybody's, the wages go up, starting in October.
Oh, so it's just.
Everybody, but your elected officials would get a. Two and a half percent increase and your base wages would increase by two and a half percent.
Well, isn't, didn't, wasn't there some extra money in some of the wages? I mean, we looked at those wages. But that was just used on the steps instead of the cola.
Yeah.
I'm not, I didn't understand what you said.
I didn't either.
Well, if we increased, like, I don't know what I, what do I budget for interest? Like the amount of interest that I've made?
Oh, interest in your budget?
Interest in investments.
Using your, using your interest.
Okay, I understand that.
So if you budgeted for like four hundred and seventy five, what if we changed it to? It, I mean, if we change it to at least five hundred thousand. You know, that would be twenty five thousand dollars more to. A cola. Because you need a hundred and twenty nine thousand for a two and a half percent cola. Hundred and fifty five thousand for a three percent cola. Or a hundred and eighty thousand for a three and a half percent.
Then you're top.
So if you figured, so if you figure. So you're like forty thousand dollars there almost, if you go with what she.
We need forty thousand, Jeff?
No, you, you would, you would have forty thousand, like you go to your breath. So we're like in the positive thirty five thousand now, instead of a negative. So you're past the pink postcard. We just need to find like.
With no cola though, right?
We got thirty five thousand towards the cola.
You got thirty five thousand for.
Towards the cola.
Towards a cola.
So now we gotta find a hundred and fifty thousand to give a cola.
But you don't, but.
Of three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent. You wanna give three and a half percent or do you wanna give two and a half percent?
Two and a half percent, which means we gotta find a hundred thousand.
Or three percent.
Okay, but let's back up one step though. You're, are you okay? You're confident that five hundred thousand dollars in interest is achievable, even though we, because we've dropped a lot of, we've dropped a lot of.
I think so. I mean, unless. Unless rates, but you, you also have to remember that people budget for things and we don't, not everybody spends every single penny of their budget.
Right. Right.
If we have to move some money around, we could do that.
I would ask, and Mike's not here, but can we agree on a two and a half percent cola?
I'd be fine with that.
I'm okay with that.
Cause then you only have to find basically ninety five thousand dollars somewhere else.
And have we, we didn't do anything with the public defender's twenty six thousand, did we?
I just was moving some money off of his. I found thirteen thousand after Charlie said that and I.
You went past it.
Did I go past it?
Yeah.
I can.
You're making me dizzy, that's how I know.
Making me dizzy. I found fifteen thousand.
So I was. I was looking at furniture.
I knocked it down to two. We could probably do a little more.
Office equipment.
Yeah, I knocked that down.
And then office supply.
I went down a little.
Okay, and then. Contractual services.
That one makes me nervous to change on it.
What's, what's a miscellaneous? How would you?
Well, yeah, it's miscellaneous. I'm not sure what they're plugging in there.
He's got a lot of miscellaneous in it already.
Yeah, he has. He had five thousand and we just knocked it down to two.
Okay. Uh, contract, yeah, can we just contractual service? I had written down to take out six thousand, but I can't remember. I think I had questions on it.
Oh, I didn't even look at that line. Should we just?
Steve, Steve's looking back here. You gotta stay away from my budget.
That's why he stayed in, that's why he hasn't left the room.
He sees how we are.
He gave us sixty thousand dollars.
Actually, I, I think I could maybe part with a little more because we just got done with our chip ceiling for the year. What did I have under that chip ceiling?
Steve, Steve, Steve.
Cause we're just doing our final numbers for that.
Right there. Line one ten, you're on it.
Five hundred thousand.
That's armor coat.
Right, that's the.
Oh, that's what he said.
That's right, that's the chip, that's the chip ceiling we did, cuz this year's chip ceiling all comes out of that. It's already paid for, but it will come out of that.
Line?
Item.
What about next year's chip ceiling?
It'll come out of next year's. So out of this too, I buy the chips this year. But the oil part doesn't come out until the next fiscal year cuz we don't start till the end of June by then.
So we can, so we can take a little out of this?
So we can drop fifty out of there.
Fifty thousand?
That'll leave me a hundred for buying chips for next year.
We got it. Well, you had a lot of bit, chip carryovers, so you're in pretty good shape. Yeah, that's a good idea. That's, that's great.
Fifty, thirty, fifty out of there.
We got it then.
Are we there?
That's all I got.
Dude! That's all you got. Well, everybody needs a patch on the back of their cola.
We're, we're, we got it.
I, do we?
I think you're, I don't know if you're quite.
I don't know if we're quite.
Well, I got another twenty three thousand in public defender.
Kurt, ninety one you need.
Thirty to forty?
I can get, I can find a three and a half percent cola. I can find it.
Thirty, um, we need to get up to a hundred and thirty thousand and we're at ninety one. So we need like forty thousand.
Can we go back to public defender?
Charlie's pushing for three and a half, not two and a half too, you guys.
God, I wouldn't pass it again.
This moment, the momentum we have right now. This, this, this thing is rolling. This is snowballing right here.
Okay.
Okay, under dues, subs, and registrations, I thought I could find twenty thousand because he only spent ten thousand, but then I thought maybe he told us. Had a reason why this went up.
There is like the dues subscription, you know, that was where fifty thousand two years ago, but then he didn't pay any out of county law library. And they were all up in there, so maybe that can come down.
Cuz he is accounting for county law library, you know, so I was thinking twenty thousand out of there. That's, I'm okay with that.
Two and twenty, I did fifteen.
You did fifteen.
And then travel expenses, I found three thousand dollars.
I knocked down two.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Ween.
So that's, I mean, that. That's, that's, that's just one budget with the ruler.
Well.
You want me to do another?
Well, well.
Let me go to county board. Let me go to county board.
Well, look, look right here too. Let's see, we're gonna. Play with this.
County board, huh?
Where's the county board at, Lisa?
Right above us.
It should be towards the end.
Of day three or the very, one of the last ones we did?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
How many of you guys are on the insurance actually?
Russ, that's an, that's not a, that's a non-issue. You are all insurance eligible. So if you would leave the board and we bring somebody else on, I've gotta have a reserve for health insurance, or this helps us a lot in that.
I'm just saying though.
No, I'm just, it's a good point, but it's just.
For any extra money.
No, that's what I was throwing out. It's easier for department heads to budget using that full-time eligible that we have set up.
Yeah.
Because if somebody, if I have somebody that quits that isn't on insurance and I hire somebody that needs full family, it kills my budget and I can't do.
Yeah, that's from what was before.
So we've divided the cost per employee and every employee.
She's got it up there, Charlie.
Gets charged an amount.
That'd be easy. If I can do it with my ruler, I can move pretty fast.
The only other thing I can think of is if I went and changed health insurance for everybody down to twenty bucks or so.
I say could we reduce that travel?
So it's one, two, three, four, five, seven, the seventh one on the last day.
Well, it's not because of that, it's because of the.
So going back to that fund, since you have extra money in that fund.
The fourteenth. The fourth day. It's about in the middle of your package.
Can you move any of that money into general?
And I think she's gotta do it.
Charlie, listen to this one.
Commissioner budget.
Charlie, did you hear what Heather said?
I think, I've already moved some money, stuff over here, thousand, twenty.
The insurance fund is, quite, it's pretty fluffed up, I guess.
Fluffed up.
It's fluffed up. Pretty fluffy.
I don't know about fluffy.
Not gonna get to touch it. Well, you can, but you're gonna beat up.
I don't know, that's kind of another, what do we need?
You just gave yourself away, Charlie.
I don't know if you, I mean, I didn't know if that was legal or not.
I don't see why not. It's our money, which is.
We're self-funded.
We're self-funded and if we wanted to move money from the self-funded account to, back to general, we could do it. We don't know why we can't. I've never heard anybody say it's illegal to move money from one fund to the other.
Okay, so like yourself, like, like you're self-funded, how much does it have in there? Like if you were to move a hundred thousand dollars.
We wouldn't, it was, we're sending it one point two million, one point three million.
If you were to move a hundred thousand dollars of that to the general fund, if that's legal, that would be your cola.
What do we need in forty right now?
If Charlie wants to do the three and a half percent.
Or you want to do three and a half or two and a half, Charlie?
That's what he said, my. That's what he said, my vote's two and a half. And I would only say, so you're talking a two and a half percent cola, plus whatever step increase they get.
Two and a half, two and a half percent.
Plus five percent for some other people.
The step increases should be already figured.
Yeah.
Within the budgets.
Into this.
In, in the budgets that, like, I figured my step increases, but I didn't figure my, I didn't figure a cola.
Well, maybe in the budget. Maybe in the budget, but the point is, how much increase are they getting?
So some of them could be getting that, eight and a half.
But last year, nobody, I mean, last year.
If they get the five, and the two and a half, and.
And a step.
And a step, then yeah.
I don't know that we got a whole.
I think we oughta go to the two and a half, and I think we're covered right there, and call it good. I'd vote for the two and a half.
I'm okay with two and a half.
Why did I go the wrong way? Sorry, gotta make sure I'm doing it right. All right, my expenses are four point three.
These budgets.
These are, I mean. We've cut, we've cut roads by much more in the past.
We'll, we'll have to take the word road off the truck, just put bridges on it.
Yeah, bridges.
Or just roads, or just roads and no bridges.
Interfund transfer from self.
Road, road, roads and take a chance.
There was.
Hundred thousand?
From self-funded. All right. And look at that levy you got, look at your levy, you guys should be very excited.
Where we at, Lisa, I got.
Three point six.
Three point six is a levy.
And we don't have to join the pink card club.
We're gonna drop, we're gonna drop to like the fiftieth percentile on the state levy. We're not gonna be the second highest state.
Well, and I honest, and I guess I do wanna comment that I to- totally agree with some of your consolidation ideas.
I'd like to see us do some of that, at some point, I'd like to have some meetings and start working towards that.
I agree.
On some of those, like, like, if you say like the weeds department, you really just need to wait until Jeff retires.
You want.
You, kind of, that's, that's a position that's gonna age out.
Well, you take, you know, another month, month and a half, two months, or he's out of, there's no weeds to spray, you just spray snow. And so, we need to consolidate, that Steve could use that person.
But what does he, but what does he do?
Pardon?
He does obviously stick for the whole rest of the year, doesn't he?
Do you wanna ask that question?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know.
You wanna know what he does?
Steve, what does he do the whole rest of the year? What is, she's asking, how, what is, how does a weed foreman stay busy a hundred percent all year long?
I don't know.
Exactly.
Exactly right, I was, you know, we're on tape.
Yeah.
They can't speculate on me.
Lisa, thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't think you'd do it.
Heather.
I still don't like it, but it's all right. I wanted to go to the pink postcard.
Well, we can still go.
You wanted to go?
Do the school, do they ever trim anything in their budgets? Do they actually sit down and try to trim anything, or do they just go?
I, do you need to vote on?
I did not set this up for action today.
Are they actually sitting trimming stuff like we're doing tonight?
No.
You guys, that's what, you, you're, you're ahead, so we are bumping back up that cash reserve a bit.
I, I'm okay with that.
If you're doing.
You're at a hundred and sixty-one thousand, so you can actually do a three percent cola and meet the medal on your cola percentage.
You wanna do that?
You're at, you're at a hundred and fifty-four thousand for a three percent increase.
Okay.
And you're ahead a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
When you add a cost of living increase, and we add an every half percent extra every year, in ten years, you've got five more percent, I mean, it's just.
It costs, well, see, the, the thing is, is that every time you, like, when I first started as treasurer, I could count on at least once a month payroll being over, just right at or over a million dollars. We're at, Charlotte told me, and this is without that cost of living increase, Charlotte told me that next week payroll's gonna be right around one, one and a half million dollars. So that's why you have to leave a little bit more in the cash reserve, so that on your slower months, we don't let it fall down too far, far, and we, it, it looks on our bank balances like we have a lot of extra money, because we're sitting on all of that ARPA money. But we just paid out three million dollars at the beginning of the week, and that's not money we'll ever get back.
But as you increase and you start paying a half a percent now, that half percent is built right into next year's, but it doesn't go away, you don't back it down. So if you take little bites, we can move forward with it.
But, well then, like, keep it at two and a half percent, and let's put a little more back in reserve, and then you'll be evened out, you'll be okay.
So, do we need some kind of a motion, or?
I, like I said, I did not set this up for you guys to take action.
This is just a public.
We'll take action at the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda.
Is that soon enough, or do we have to have another meeting? When, what's your deadlines?
Um, I think mine's just the pu- the postcard deadline, to tell you the.
Okay. September fifth is the next.
Pardon me?
September fifth is your next public meeting, correct?
Lisa, what do we drop to make that?
Yes. Our next regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we can.
Is that soon enough?
We're not quite half a percent, we drop about.
Are you calling Paul tomorrow?
Three fifths of a percent or something.
I'll call him tonight.
Okay, I mean, don't, don't make her do that.
I will call. I will call.
Tell him what you did.
Tell him what I did.
We made your cuts more than you probably wanted.
If she runs out of money, she's gonna be back here asking for it anyway.
He'll get it out of Roden Bridge, Steve. And so, the total amount of tax asking is how much, thirteen something?
Thirteen, three ninety-three, one oh nine.
Thirteen, three ninety-three, one zero nine, thank you.
So, do they even, this is all budget workshop discussion, do they even have to take action, or just tell you to tell all of us to build in a two and a half percent cola?
I just put it in your budgets, you don't have to build it in.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I don't think you have to vote on the cola, but I think you gotta vote on a budget.
Well, that's not until September.
Well, that could be, I don't know.
Yeah, there really isn't anything, well, we'll have to look, we have to do the property ta- we have, we have a couple of meetings coming up in September regarding this budget.
Right.
If I can move forward, get my paperwork done, and then you'll probably have that meeting the last week of September, after the joint public.
After the public joint.
Right, well, you finalize, you finalize the budget.
Joint public here.
Yeah, and then we can finalize, cause if you go to that meeting and then we all say, well, maybe something will happen, we can make changes. So we'll finalize it all in Sep- the end of September, so, I don't recall, oh, there is one thing, I have that restricted.
You've got three things that we commonly do, I was just looking back.
Were ya? That restricted authority.
Somebody called me and told me that it was a village and their accountant told them they needed a levy from me, and I was like, you're not a part of the prelim, and you are gonna get that to, from us for, till like October, so, I don't know, I guess, I guess we'll see what happens. But, that's why I was looking back and I saw that.
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, everybody, Steve, everybody.
So, we're gonna be tax asking a little more?
Everybody else is like. Lisa. Thank you.
Mark, you were asking me because of the cola that I haven't put in there. Into all the salaries, and that'll bump the tax asking up some, but it won't take us to the pink postcard.
Is it gonna change our mill there?
Will you show us the, uh, current levy again?
The current levy was point three seven oh seven eight, and it might go up like point three seven one or three seven two.
It shouldn't change, if we took it out of the inside of that.
But I haven't put back in all the cola, and that cola's gonna come in.
Oh, that's right.
Cause I have to put the cola in every budget that it applies to.
So she's got the money there to put it in? But it's just not in each individual.
Shouldn't change the mill if it's already built in, you're just moving it around in there.
Well, but it's not really in there, it's in my little line here, so that's gonna come closer and closer to zero, once I put the two and a half percenters in.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, so, and that will.
Trust the woman with the spreadsheet.
That insane, next year.
You don't see the R D with anybody over that table.
But it will go up a little bit, but it makes sense, you brought it down, cause our valuations went up higher and. I still hate it. Still, that's what we're working for.
You done? Done. Kelly, Kelly.